Yes. A little bit deeper. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, so I live in Quebec for awhile, so I do speak some French, but not very good. Sure, yeah. Sure, whatever you like, I don't know whether they have signed on yet. The it's Dr. Anthony Mack and our other retina staff, Dr. Lei Ching, yeah. I don't know they have signed up already. I enjoy them.
Good morning, everyone. Hi Hudson, I'm very happy to be here. Can you hear me? Okay. Thanks for the invitation.
Good morning to our viewers here in the United States around the world and the Metaverse in 2029. I'm John Burrow alongside Breonna Heeler. Chris Cuomo is standing by in Rome because President Biden has just wrapped up a meeting with Pope Francis III. After the president spent ninety minutes, ninety minutes of a very long time with the Pope. In a matter of minutes here, the president will sit down with the president of Italy. Let's get right now to Chris Cuomo and Chris.
All right, thank you very much. They absolutely had a meeting. It was a long meeting. Let's discuss how long, what that we see in about a few months.
So, thank you very much, and I would like to call Dr. Lam's fellow, Anthony Mack. Hi Anthony Mack, how are you doing?
Hello, great, thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks for inviting me again to this wonderful meeting.
And I also want to thank Dr. Kim Lee for being invited for this event. That's the first younger retina retinosome. And we are so pleased that you were participating, you are participating here together with Dr. Lam. It's a very honor for us, okay? Dr. Anthony, and thank you again for your second show in the Retinosome. And if you wanna share your screen and start your case?
Uh, yeah. It says I have been disabled for screen sharing.
Okay, so our technician is already.
Oh, okay, co-host, yeah, yeah. So, let me know. Oh, one second. Oh, I might need to rejoin because there's some security preferences. One second.
Dr. Lam, these presentations are from your service in Hong Kong. Tell us please about your service there.
Yeah, they are from the Hong Kong retina service, yes.
And how many fellows, how many fellows usually you have per year? I mean, red fellow.
The program in Hong Kong is quite, is different. And so most of the fellows are local fellows. And in the Hong Kong U program, that is the Queen Mary and the Grand Hospital, I have just the Anthony Mack. And I guess Dr. Lee was early on as a fellow, but then she now is an associate consultant, so she has since got promoted, so.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Lee. How are you doing?
Good evening, I'm fine, how are you?
I'm fine, nice to have you here. And.
But Dr. Lee is actually is busy because she is going to have grand round next Monday. So she's busy on this weekend just to getting two presentations ready. One for the retina awesome, and then the other one is for the grand round next week. So she, she will need a good rest after this, this week.
All right, thank you for participating, Dr. Lee. And Anthony, you are all set?
Yes, yes, I'm back, yeah, sorry, my, my computer was not allowing me to share the screen, but I think it should be okay now if I can have permission again to share.
Sure. And Kim Lee as well.
Yes, yes, it's working now. Okay, great. So. So if I could go into. Is, can you see my screen?
Yeah, we can see your screen, so you just need to play, yeah.
Yeah, okay, great, so, good morning, everyone. Thank you again for inviting me to this wonderful meeting. And thank you Prof Lam for allowing me to present in this meeting. So I have an interesting case to share with everyone. So our patient is a sixty-five-year-old lady with a history of acute myeloid leukemia. She previously had hematopoietic stem cell transplantation done six months ago, and the donor being her daughter. And unfortunately, after the transplant, she had a poor cell count recovery, and she was on long-term cyclosporine A. And because of the poor cell count recovery, she was chronically pancytopenic, requiring frequent transfusion. And she had a central line in situ, and her baseline complete blood count was as, what's displayed here. Chronically anemic with a hemoglobin that ran around seven with frequent transfusion. White blood cells were up and down, platelets chronically low, very low, and neutropenic as well. So that's her background. And she was referred to our center for bilateral blurring of vision and flotus for one week. And she was seen previously by a private ophthalmologist, who found what they thought was uveitis in this patient, and was given topical steroids and also anti-gliocoma eye drops, presumably because she presented with elevated intraocular pressure as well. The only past ocular history of note was right eye cataract surgery in the past. So on examination, her visual acuity was twenty over forty in both eyes. Intraocular pressures were normal. And on the anterior segment examination, there was some fine keratic precipitates in both eyes, and trace cells in the anterior chamber for both eyes. On fundo examination, as we can see for the right eye, there's multiple retinal hemorrhages. There's a Roth spot inferior to the disc. So these changes would be compatible with her sort of hematological conditions, with chronic pancytopenia, low platelets. And then in the left eye, there's the most obvious abnormality. There's a retinal infiltrate with sort of indistinct borders in the temporal macular. And also there's some vitritis, hence the sort of blurry fundus photo in the left eye. But the disc is still very clearly seen. There's no evidence of any vasculitis, nomaculodema. And what is not shown here in the photo is that in the periphery of both eyes, there's also a foci of, in fact, well, infiltrates, retinal infiltrates in the periphery. So in the right eye, it's at the nine o'clock region, and on the left eye, it looks something like this. It's a photo I took at the bedside and with my iPhone, so it's not as clear. Also with the vitritis, it's difficult to get a good image. But we can see just vaguely this sort of whitish-yellow infiltrate in the periphery in the left eye, with some surrounding retinal hemorrhages. So essentially, this lady has bilateral panuveitis, mild anterior chamber inflammation, but there was definite inflammation, vitritis in the left eye, and multiple whitish retinal infiltrates in both eyes. In a background of her hematological condition and neutropenia, we were primarily worried about an infection. Obviously, the other differentials would be inflammation or a masquerade sort of picture. And previously, we actually worked in a tertiary center with a large hematology unit, and we frequently received referrals for these kind of patients. And previously, we had some devastating fungal endophytonis in this group, this type of patient. So my, my sort of first worry was fungal endophytonis in this patient, with the insidious onset, and there was no obvious source of systemic effect, the foci for her. She was not sort of septic looking, not feverish, no other systemic infection. So I immediately admitted her under the hematology team for a septic workup. And in terms of the ocular workup, I, because of the left eye inflammation vitritis, immediately we did a left eye tap and inject for her, sent the aqueous for viral PCR, which came back all negative. And in the same setting, we injected her with intravitreal amphotericin B. So for systemic workup, blood CMB was taken multiple times, were all negative. The blood culture was also taken, both line culture and peripheral blood culture negative for bacteria. Fungal usually takes a while to come back. The syphilis blood work was negative. Toxoplasmosis bloods were taken, but they weren't immediately available yet. The autoimmune blood panel, including ESR, ANA, ANCA, were all negative. And chest X-ray was clear, and I believe we did a Mantu test as well, which was negative. Her urine culture came back positive for entococcus, but probably unlikely in this sort of presentation to be responsible for her ocular condition. The ultrasound abdomen was done as well, there's no liver abscess, otherwise unremarkable. MRI brain was also done, no infected foci were identified, and no infiltrates. So she was admitted, and we consulted the microbiology team, and she was immediately started on oral voriconazole with a presumed diagnosis of fungal endophytonis. Her central line was then removed and sent for culture. And unfortunately, she was not able to tolerate intravitreal antifungal due to her renal impairment. And she was started on intensive topical steroids. So a week later, she showed a little bit of improvement, subjectively. Still trace cells in the anterior chamber. The infiltrates in the retina were similar looking, but not worse. And the left eye vitritis seemed to have improved slightly. So there was no progression. So we brought her back in about ten days later. And this time, she missed three days of oral treatment, and she said it was definitely subjectively worse. Her visual acuity decreased in both eyes to twenty fifty in the right, twenty sixty-three in the left. And this time, her intraocular pressure in the right eye elevated to thirty-eight. And there was a huge increase in cells and also vitritis in both eyes. So at this point, I was thinking, did the inflammation increase because she was not compliant with her medications, both topical and oral? And if we resume her on the medications, hopefully she will get better, which unfortunately was not the case. So two weeks later, everything was similar, she was not getting better, except this time, there's some new developments in the right eye. So this very clearly infiltrates in the superior, superior to the fovea, and also superior to superior arcade, new foci of retinal infiltrates. The left eye, the vitritis, has gotten much worse. The retinal infiltrates in the temporal macular is still there. And also that two o'clock infiltrate is now still there, possibly slightly bigger, and with a very fuzzy border. So she's definitely not, yes.
Yeah, I was gonna ask the participants, the group here. Any thought at this point, like any, any comments or suggestions that whether we should change course of the treatment? Do another intravitreal injections of the amphotericin B? Or consider another, another diagnosis?
Dr. Lam, may I ask you, you and Dr. Mack, by the time the patient got worse and you decided to go on with voriconazole again, was the culture ready for toxoplasmosis, for example? Or you didn't have the results?
Hudson, you're very good, and we don't have the pathology back yet. And I, I think I'll let Dr. Mack carry on. So, yes, you, you want to know if the toxic culture, so.
Yes, so, yeah, we basically summarized this patient, so not responsive to treatment, suspected fungal endophytonis, and yes, you're absolutely right. So we went through all her investigations again, and she was positive for toxoplasmosis. So this, remember, this patient is under the hematology team, and she has a lot of blood investigations almost daily or every other day. And all her investigations sometimes get mixed up in a huge pile on the computer system. And for some reason, this took a little while to flag up, even though it came back positive. But I think credit to Dr. Lee. When I was a bit stuck with this patient, I asked for her opinion, and this is exactly what she found, that this patient was actually positive, not just in the blood, but also for the aqueous PCR. And interestingly, her daughter was negative for the blood for IgM and IgG upon screening. And she was started on septrin, nine hundred and sixty-milligram speedy, and also oral prednisolone. And she responded very well to the treatment. And after a few weeks of treatment, her inflammation and infiltrates completely resolved. So toxoplasmosis is not very common in Hong Kong. I understand that in Brazil, according to Dr. Lam, it's quite prevalent in Brazil. And, but we, we know from the past that toxoplasmosis is associated with HIV, and it's very well studied and recognized. But in this particular group of patients who had stem cell transplant or solid organ transplant, it's not as frequently sort of studied or reported. And previously, there's some publications on this, but not, not specifically for ocular toxoplasmosis, but toxoplasmosis in general. So this is a study from about ten years ago. They investigated forty-six centers from eleven countries in Europe, and all the patients that they could find with stem cell transplant or solid organ transplants, and they identified about ninety patients with toxoplasmosis. And so the majority of them actually had very severe toxoplasmosis, which were life-threatening with cerebral or pulmonary or disseminated toxoplasmosis. And these had very high mortality for those patients. So ocular toxoplasmosis, according to them, was a more mild form, and was sort of the minority of these patients. And another third of these patients had no clinical signs. And they found that PCR was the most helpful diagnostic tools among these patients. This is another sort of study that was specifically for stem cell transplantation patients. They investigated in fifteen European centers and found forty-one cases of toxoplasmosis. And overall, the incidence of toxoplasmosis in this group of patients was about one percent. And the majority of them occurred within around six months of transplantation, which is similar to the case of our patient. So in terms of discussion or sort of a panel, just some pearls from the experts. I was wondering what the duration of antibiotics would be, usually for ocular toxoplasmosis. I understand for this group of patients who are on long-term immunosuppressants or previously had a stem cell transplant, they sometimes would be given prophylaxis. I'm not sure why this patient wasn't given prophylaxis, or whether there's a standardized protocol for these patients. But, so this patient is now quite tricky for us because she has had, had it for five weeks, but her liver function is deteriorating, this slowly deranged liver function, which may or may not be associated with the contramox. So, and the choices of antibiotics are also limited for her because we don't want to give her anything that has myelosuppression. And then the second issue is the dose and duration for the oral steroids. I start, she's about sixty kilograms, but I, and I consulted the professor in hematology before starting her, whether they would be okay with me starting on a high-dose steroids, considering that she has other sort of medical issues. So we started her on thirty, and she responded quite well to that. But now she's actually on oral steroids for other medical reasons, because relating to her hematology condition. So would be very grateful to hear some sort of experience on treating toxoplasmosis from the panel from Brazil.
Yeah, we, we share this case because of the expertise from Brazil, knowing that you probably have far more experience with these types of problems than people in, in Hong Kong. And the other options of medications is clindamycin, and perhaps maybe you can comment on the use of either systemic and intravitreal clindamycin as a treatment option for ocular histoplasmosis, and anyone.
And Anthony, we see far more cases of toxoplasmosis, as you said, over here in South America. And our first choice is sulfadiazine and pyrimetamine. And on the corticoids, we like using them, especially when the retinitis is closer to the fovea, and there is no vitrocells, and we follow this. And usually, we use the medication for, starting with two grams a day for at least thirty days. So we follow the patient and see whether the retinitis is getting better. You see the retinitis in the left eye, from your case, was closer to, and vitros were, was more hazy. So, did the retinitis go away?
Yes, completely, it's now an atrophic scar, basically.
Yeah, very good case, but we see far more cases in the. I think that's the first thought we have, Dr. Lam. When we have a case like, like this one, we think, like, we go straight to their retinitis due to toxoplasmosis because it's so prevalent over here that we, we do the workup. And for the second choice, we usually use clindamycin. And, but usually, the patients with some time after starting using the medications.
Thank you. So what's your usual duration of the antibiotics? Okay. Okay. Yeah.
Have you ever used the intravitreal clindamycin to treat toxo, ocular toxo? Because they will practice that in in the literature.
What, which drug you are mentioning?
Intravitreal clindamycin for?
Clindamycin, yeah, yeah. We use that too, but especially in second choice, when the patients did not respond. Or maybe, they usually respond, but usually when they are allergic to sulfa. So that's when we go straight to the clindamycin. If, you know, they are allergic to sulfa, some patients are.
Yeah, but systemic though, I'm talking about intra ocular clindamycin.
For clindamycin, I usually like using 20 days. 20 days is usually enough. But this is a second choice. And if you see the vitros, if you see it's getting better. But also, pyrimetamine is good for the cysts. So we keep using this for a bit longer than only the sulfa or the clindamycin. I like using pyrimetamine as well.
Okay, thank you.
But well managed, very well managed case, Anthony. And congratulations for your case.
Thank you.
I would like to call Dr. Lee, Dr. King Lee, for presenting your case. And again, I want to thank you for participating in our first young retina retinosome together with Vitoria Collobor. This is the special session. And you are welcome to share your screen.
Yeah. Can you hear the screen?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, perfect.
So, yeah, good evening. Thanks for the invitation for the presentation here. So I'm going to present a case of cytomegalovirus retinitis in a patient with lymphoma. So this is a 65 year old gentleman with history of diabetes, low grade B cell lymphoma. He was on four immunosuppressants, three immunosuppressants and steroids for the low grade B cell lymphoma. And he presented with both eye gradual blurry vision for three weeks. The patient's presenting facial acuity was 0.7 for both eyes. And for the physical exam, we found there is right eye CMV retinitis. The aqueous CMV PCR was positive and the blood PP65 antigen was positive. So this is the fundus photo of that time. We can see there is a large infiltration over in the temporal area and involving the inferior macular. And there is also infiltration in the supranatural area of the fundus. And there's scatter, multiple retinal hemorrhage over the retina, over the retina infiltrates. So we started the intravitreal injection of gencyclovia after that. And also started intravenous foscanid. And after the, this is the OCT of the patient at the presentation. So for the inferior, you can see there is the inferior retina necrosis. And there is a retina infiltrate in the inner layer on the retina. So after the intravitreal injection of gencyclovia for nine injection, this is the fundus photo. We can see that the infiltrates of the retina was much, much smaller. And there is residual retinal hemorrhage. And there is a extensive retina vessel, there are many ghost vessels. And we did PRP at the peripheral retina to prevent the retinal detachment. So for the serial OCT, you can see that the inferior retinitis area becoming more atrophic. But the macular is becoming more edematous. There was interretinal foot increasing. And a year later, after the presentation of the CMV retinitis, the retina of the retinitis become very atrophic, showing this inferior OCT. And there's obvious systomacular edema. And we performed the ICG and FFA for this patient. For the left side is the ICG. We can see there is an inferior loss of the coradocapillaries. And there is a loss of RP inferiorly. There is some hyper sinus, pinpoint hyper sinus over the superior macular. At the center and the right is that frozen angiography. And we can see there is a large area, non profusion area over the temporal and temporal macular and the fovea. And also there is non profusion area in the superior peripheral retina. So there is a systomacular edema complicated by the CMV retinitis. We treat this CMO by the intravitreal injection of the Iliia. So after three injections, we can see the systomacular edema become less. And this is, this was the fundus photo two years after the injection. You can see there is the very, the vessels are very thin. And there is a hard acid at the fovea. And there is peripheral, there are peripheral laser marks and the pigmentation. So this was the latest follow up of the patient's OCT. We can see there is less systomacular edema, but there is disruption of the photoreceptive area over the fovea. So that's why the patients have very poor visual acuity. The last follow up is only 1 over 60. So this is the end of the case presentation. We would like to have more discussion on the treatment on the CMV retinitis and the systomacular edema after the CMV retinitis.
So this patient, the CMV responded well to the antivirge. Normally, you expect steroid will be something that required to settle the edema. So interesting that the the antivirge actually was quite effective here to resolve the edema. And whether it's related to the ischemia because of the large area of the H2R or is it simply the the effects of the permeability of the vessels that stopped the leakage?
Dr. Kim, how many injections from Iliia you gave?
Nine in total.
Ah, okay, so it's a number nine. Nine and after those nine injections, did it resolve completely? Or some of his cysts, you would care about it? Or you would still plan to do as a treatment extent basis?
Well, this patient had the still residual more interretinal foot and showing in the OCT. But even after the multiple injection of the Iliia, the facial acuity didn't improve. So we now stopped the Iliia injection. And systomacular edema remained stable. It doesn't go worse.
Okay, Dr. Lam, would you think that could be a good idea? If the edema, it's got better now, but still we have some cysts? Do you think that could be a good idea to try Ozodex? Or do you think the court called action could otherwise interfere in a bad way in the case?
No, I think the amount of cysts, residual cysts are small. We were, we were very comfortable just kind of monitoring it and maybe treating it with just topical steroid without resorting the intravitreal steroid. The the more longer question is whether the patient need to stay on the antiviral for a longer period of time? Because this is different than ARN that tend to be in the, ARN tend to be the immunocompetent patients. And CMV tend to be in the immunodeficient patients. And the incidence of the the treatments of CMV has evolved over time. And and also the, you used to be an HIV patients, but nowadays is in a mix of patients who are immunodeficient, whether they are home mail transplant or they are on immunosuppressants because of systemic diseases. And so it is, I think we're sharing this case is just to try to highlight some of the the changes in the way how CMV has presented in the in the current time. And also whether the treatment, the management are any different than when we were treating them with HIV? How is it in in Brazil? Do you see much of CMV retinitis anymore?
Yeah, we see, but not that much. Depends on the service. But some services are referred for this type of infections. But we would treat the same way. But it's quite common, especially in some areas, as I said, that have referrals. But I think the incidence is not that large.
Yeah, if if the patient wasn't responding to the antivirge, I think I would be quite willing to switch to a steroid such as Ozodex. And but she slowly but surely responded to the antivirge. And and I think the amount of residual cystic changes, we, as I mentioned, we are comfortable to just monitor them, yeah.
Sure, I was just wanting, wanted to ask you, Dr. Lam. I remember when I was in Toronto back with Dr. Berger at the Sunnybrook Hospital there. And we, you know, like, we are talking about 30 years ago, many years ago, we used to inject gencyclovia intravitrous for some reaction in the posterior chamber of CMV and this stuff. The how how did that change? So people don't do that as, of course, sometimes it's necessary. But we don't do it anymore, much more as we did in the past. And how would you manage those patients? Because now in the era of the post complications, these CMOS and edemas, and we tend to use the antivirge, antivirge. But in the past, we relied more on the treatment, the systemic treatment, but also in the local injections.
I think in managing these patients, the patient actually receives intravitreal antiviral, intravitreal gencyclovia. And the source of the CMV probably systemic, especially if they have bilateral presentations. Then in this case, they also need to be on systemic antiviral. I think to give it intravitally, the intention is to try to get a very high concentrated therapeutic dose to the eye while you are treating them systemically with the antiviral to get a overall viral suppressions and to avoid other related CMV complications. Because I think the eye is the only organ that we see. Others system, maybe, for instance, the brain, may have subclinical CMV involvement without us knowing. So I think that in an immunocompromised patients, it probably is necessary to be on a systemic antiviral, like such as either gencyclovia or foscanid.
Okay, correct. Thank you very much, Dr. King, for your case. Great images as well. And I want to invite now Dr. Enrique, Dr. Enrique from from our part, our retina fellow at the I Bank Foundation.
Good morning, Professor, good morning, everyone.
Thank you, Enrique, for participating. Enrique is a very good and active fellow from the I Bank Foundation. We are pleased to have you. And after Enrique's presentation, we are gonna have Dr. Suzuki Yoshima that just arrived. Welcome, Dr. Yoshima. Welcome again to Retinosome.
Hi, how are you? So weird to be late.
Everything all right?
Yeah, just came back to my home.
All right, thank you. So we are into Retinosome Young Retina now, the first young retina. And we introduce Dr. Enrique Ferreira. His first time here in the Retinosome. An honor for us to have him here and also to have you with the first young retina Retinosome. Thank you. You are, can you share the screen, Enrique?
For sure. There it is. Can you see my screen?
Yes, it's perfect.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone, good evening for some of you guys that are across the ocean. It's an honor for me to be here. And I would like to thank especially Dr. Woodson for this opportunity and for all the knowledge that it has been given me through this time. I'm a first year retina fellowship here at Brazil in the FUBA Foundation. And today I'll be talking about complications of vitreous substitutes, mostly, and mostly about silicone oil. If any of you professors have comments or like to say anything during the presentation, please be my guest to interrupt me because of all your experience. You might help a lot during. So silicone oil complications during the tracheotomy might occur during intraoperative or postoperative. I'll begin talking about intraoperative. The main ones that we might find during our practice is subretinal migration. This occur mostly when tractions are not properly removed. And intraoperative bleeding as well. If we do not cauterize or do the homostasis correctly before implanting the silicone oil and is there any bleeding that we haven't checked before? It might mix with the silicone oil and the visualization, it's not clear at all during the surgery and will jeopardize our surgery. And in order for that not to happen before implanting, we should auto check for any bleedings that we hadn't seen and cauterized it before. And approaching more deeply about subretinal silicone oil, it happens mostly when there is unreleived traction in the subretinal space. It will migrate there. And if we relieve the tractions, the risk is greatly reduced. And after all the tractions are relieved, and if it's still insufficient to flatten the retina, we might approach with a retinotomy to perform and to flatten the retina and reattach itself. Here it's an example of a rhygmatogen, retinal detachment. As we can see, a lot of PVR and the retina is contracted itself and it's not flattened and not reaching the RPE. And the best way to approach this kind of case is to release all this, relieve all this traction and reattach the retina using perfluorocarbon to stabilize the posterior pole and stabilize the retina and slowly remove all the tractions each one by one to stabilize the retina. And afterwards, if we relieve all of them and still we haven't reattached the retina, we can approach with a retinotomy to relaxate the retina and reattach itself. We can also find some postoperative complications due to silicone oil. The most commons are cataract that it will happen six to 12 months. The most commons are cataract that it will happen six to twelve months after the surgery, after the vitrectomy with the silicone oil. And it's important to know that some patients will have cataract greater than others, but mostly all patients that were submitted to vitrectomy and with implantation of silicone oil will develop cataract at some point. We might also have silicone oil migrating to the interior chamber. Glaucoma, glaucoma might happen in two ways mostly. In the recent postoperative, we might have pupillary block due to patients without the crystalline or the IOL, ethic. The silicone oil will migrate to the interior chamber and might block the angle if we do not perform iridotomy. Mostly, it's recommended to perform the iridotomy inferiorly because of the physical property of the silicone oil to be lighter than the aqueous humor. So the aqueous humor can flow downwards through the iridotomy to the interior chamber and gain access to the trabecular meshwork. Another way to have glaucoma in the longer postoperative is due to emulsified silicone oil leading to the trabecular meshwork and causing tuberculosis and increasing the intraocular pressure irreversibly. The only way to manage the patients mostly is due to tubes such as a MED tube or Susana tube. And another complication we might find is band keratopathy, which when we have the silicone oil having intimate contact with the endothelium, which will jeopardize the oxygen of the endothelium and the endothelium will suffer. Another complication is epiretinal membrane, refractive changes such as myopia in ethic eyes and hyperopia in ethic eyes. This is an example of glaucoma in patients we do not perform the iridotomy. When we implant the silicone oil in ethic eyes, the silicone oil will reach the interior chamber and the aqueous humor will stay in the posterior chamber, increasing the intraocular pressure and leading to damage in the optic nerve. If we perform the iridotomy, the aqueous humor will push the silicone oil back to the posterior chamber and migrate to the interior chamber, reaching the trabecular meshwork and draining itself out. So it's very important to remember to perform this part in the surgery. This is an example of emulsified silicone oil at the superior angle as we can see at the gonioscopy. Another example of complications of silicone oil is trapped under the conjunctiva. It might come out of the scler, our sclerotomy if we do not close it properly or and it will migrate and we might have this cysts under the conjunctiva. If we implant a silicone IOL with silicone oil in the posterior chamber, the posterior pole, the silicone IOL will became opaque. Thankfully, this lens aren't used anymore. It's very unusual to see one of these. And band keratopathy, this is an example that I explained before. Complications of silicone oil we might also find in the interior chamber, emulsified silicone oil. This is an example of reverse hypopia and emulsified silicone oil in the retina. This is a study that I found in the American Journal of Ophthalmology of a very rare case and a very rare complication of silicone oil migration into the brain that I found it very interesting. A patient who had immune deficiency syndrome developed a regmatogenous retinal detachment that was repaired with silicone oil. The silicone oil gained access to the central nervous system throughout prolonged increase of the intraocular pressure. The patient was very hard to manage because he did not collaborate with the treatment, he did not want to use drops according to the study. So the intraocular pressure was very high during the whole postoperative and the oil bubbles pass through the PMR to the suparachnoid space and to the cerebral spinal fluid and gain access to the ventricles. This is MRI of the patient showing the silicone oil inside the left eye and migrating to the brain throughout the optic nerve and gain access to the ventricles. This is another case of the same complication of the silicone oil gaining access to the brain, but this patient had silicone oil in both eyes. And as you can see here in the CT scan, the silicone oil in the anterior ventricle. In the patient, the patient was in supine position. So they placed the patient looking downwards in a prone position and the silicone oil migrated to the back ventricles, the posterior ventricles. I thought it was a very interesting image. Another study that I found very interesting, it is a fairly old study written by Charles Evans that describes silicone oil droplets found in the chamber angle, ciliary body, iris, retina and the optic nerve itself. This happened in a human eye after twelve years with silicone oil implanted in his eye. Back then, they did not, did not take the silicone oil very often, so it stayed for too long. And as we can see, there's images of histopathology, this silicone oil droplets in the ciliary body, in the iris itself, in the retina and in the optic nerve. Thank you. This is a very short presentation. Thank you very much for the opportunity, Dr. Woodson again, and all the other professors. If you guys have any comments about it, I'll be very happy to hear.
Thank you, Enrique. Great presentation, really awesome slides and good research, very nice articles. And before I pass it on to the professor, Dr. Suzuki Yoshima, I will show you the case of a silicone oil complication that we did here at the I Bank Foundation some time ago. Let me share with you, it's only around three minutes. And this is a very interesting case that was, can you see my screen?
Yes.
This was published in
Vitrectomy: Subretinal PFC Revival with 38-Gauge Cannula Low Infusion Under Silicone Oil. This is the preoperative retinal peek. We start the case with a very low BSS infusion to avoid silicone oil leaking through the sclerotomies. The procedure needs to be performed fast, otherwise we lose intraocular pressure, silicone oil and the media can get very hazy. We approach the bubble with the bent tip of the cannula and aspirate the internal PFC very gently. We go after some missing PFC droplets elsewhere. That's about it. We remove the BSS infusion as soon as we completed this step. Thank you very much.
So thank you again for having the patients to watch. And again, I want to thank you all residents and fellows from Dr. Lem and from our part, Dr. Anthony Mack, Dr. Lee, Dr. Enrique. You are part of the history of Retinosome now. That was the first Retinosome Young Retina. That was great. Of course, we are gonna organize greater meetings and larger meetings for retinas, residents and fellows, but that was awesome to participate with you. Really good cases that make us think over diagnosis differentials. And now with Dr. Enrique, complications of the surgery with silicone oil and all their tamponades. Thank you again. And I want to invite Dr. Suzuki Yoshima, three minutes in advance because I was a little worried with Dr. Yoshima because he's got some meetings tonight as well. And it's always an honor, Dr. Yoshima, to be here with you, to learn with you. And you are welcome again to Retinosome. And feel free to share your screen and if you want to talk a bit, a little bit before your presentation, you are welcome.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. I'm sorry to be late. So it's my pleasure to participate again. And tonight, right now here in Japan with about 10:00 PM. So I'll give you a very short video oriented presentation about young patient. And this patient, I still have no idea about how to further treat with this, the current situation I show you next. So can you see my slide?
Yes, it's perfect. If you want to enlarge the screen.
All right. So this is, the patient is nine years old, a young female, is a basketball player. She has a very longstanding chronic traumatic laryngeal detachment, unfortunately complicated with a very large macro tear and lots of subarachnoid strands in the left eye. I show here, this may be the original tear, maybe a hole in inferior side. This is this young patient and this bone attachment, it's not so viable because I suppose before surgery, the PVD not occurred in this young patient. So if only have this one small single hole with even though had lots of subarachnoid strand, I think the more first choice to do the buckle for the patient. But unfortunately, the patient, you can see here, a very large macro tear, it's complicated. So I decided to perform the vitrectomy, otherwise I cannot close the hole and I cannot attach it because it holds a stiffer position, it was, they're conditionally, the subarachnoid flow, the intraocular flow will flow into this way to keep the attachment. And I show here, this is the OCT, showing the vertical and horizontal section of large ear and the visual field effect as shown here. So here I show the video, how I can treat this patient. I plan to perform the lens spewing, vitrectomy. As expected, this patient have no PVD, but very easy to create a basically longstanding. I use the cannula, you can visualize assisted, the videos, visualize, cannula assisted PVD and gently to separate the posterior hyoid from the retina up to the peripheral area. We can show, you can see here the large macro tear and this may be the original hole and the last one, subarachnoid strand on here. The first key point is to how can you perform the peripheral shaving as much as possible you can do. So even under the lens spewing situation, you can approach into the peripheral area under the wide beam system, as I show here in the receler. And next, I try to perform island peeling in this detachment situation. So one tip is use the peripheral carbon. So you can dilate, use the BBG, preembrogene sustained island and not sparrow this so fast. After inject BBD and next inject peripheral carbon and you can stain the island much more dense and you can use the forceps to easily remove the membrane, maybe the island and together with the ERM underneath the peripheral carbon as shown here. You can see the peeled area and unpeeled area, there's some difference, irregular deflection. And even underneath the peripheral carbon, you can see the subarachnoid strands keep the attachment. So I performed internal hole and tried to remove the subarachnoid strands or the subarachnoid membrane. And underneath the peripheral, can you measure where the traction already released? So finally, I just opened the three internal hole and remove not all the strand, substrand, it's a partial strand, but you can release the traction. You can flatter the retina underneath the peripheral carbon. And again, go back to the peripheral to shave it again. This is a 10K high speed varroa cutter, so much easier to approach the peripheral. You can shave the varroa to only last the varroa sting, which else at the peripheral. And finally, the laser and in the cryo to form the lysanthexy. And finally, use the sisway fade gas, not the silicone oil, just use the gas to conclude surgery. And just three weeks after the surgery, you can see the retina was attached, but unfortunately, of course, as expected, that large macro tear still remained, maybe a little bit small one, but still kept around the macro area. So my question about the experienced surgeon, how to treat this situation? The patient, anyway, the video created a cover to the 2200, but still remained a very large macro tear on here.
Great case.
My question about how to treat this situation?
This was great and I was just curious, the patient, did you rotate the retina so as to have this very good result and better vision like 2200? Did you do some macro translocation at the end?
Oh, no. I still see the patient, just finished the first surgery, so I have no idea how about treated this one, the next step.
Dr. Lem, would you like to comment on the Dr. Yoshima's case?
I think that Dr. Yoshima did a wonderful job and sharing such a beautiful surgery with very excellent video there. I, it's, I mean, the fact that you were able to get it all reattached is already kind of an excellent outcome. You have a flat opened macro hole from, I guess, from traumatic origins, so I, I'm not sure you can actually able to close it. I was wondering, when you were doing the original surgery, the first surgery, would you have considered doing an island flap, a very large island flap that may have covered the macro under the PFCL?
Yeah, I think, but you know, previously also encountered this large macro tear, but doesn't work because it's too large. You know, the island flap, the concept is to just make the, just like the scaffold to let accelerate the region migration. But because I just show you the horizontal distance too large, I don't think it's so it really works. So in the first surgery, I expect maybe make me shrink the macro tear. Actually, it's come to the small one, but just like last time you also present about the new technique, I also give, I'll show the same technique to you, the artificial detachment around macro hole, but it's too large, I don't think it's work. So the last concept, idea, maybe use transplantation, but also I have no idea about how can you make, this is irregular shape. It's not easy to make the same shape to balance the large macro tears, you know.
Yeah, I assume that the macro hole itself is smaller compared to what it was. I assume that the macro hole itself is smaller compared to what it was preoperatively. So personally, I think it is already a quite a successful outcome. And the question whether are called autoglass retinal transplantations in this instance will have make a difference? I don't know because I don't personally have much experience on that. And I don't know how, I've seen pictures of them and whether that will make any difference to the vision outcome will be interesting.
Yeah. Because this young patient are very concerned about if you use a translocation, maybe higher chance to encounter PBR or something.
Right. And so, but if I, if she's my patient, I'm already very happy.
Yeah.
With the outcome, yeah.
Yeah. Let's go back to the play the basketball right now, she's.
Yeah.
Well, Hudson, can I, can I interfere?
Yeah, yeah, please.
Hello, Yuzuke.
Hi, how are you?
Nice to see you from that distance. The thing that I saw in this case, the similar case with younger people that had some accidents that they have went to retina detachment. The funny thing is that you see a very longstanding retina detachment that it has already the vitreous a-touched, not detached. So the difference is, when you remove the vitreous, the mobilization of the retina was like it was a fresh detachment. You didn't see any signs like the old people detachment that they have already. So one is that when you see this case, you have a false idea that this is a relatively flat retina. But after you remove the posterior vitreous, then you see the mobility. It's very useful for to fix it. The second, when you, and it's not so easy to remove the vitreous that it's attached after so many months. And another issue is that we show these cases for longstanding that they have, I have a similar case that I showed with, they having subretinal strands.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
A lot of them have subretinal strands. And I was thinking about the buckle also myself because they say when you relax it, this strand or not, but they still had to be removed. But it's nice to see that we have the same experience. And it's nice to notice to people that the difference from young detachment with the contusion trauma is a little different, different, different style.
Yeah. So this patient, I think, the first of all, initially, they only have the inferior tear encountering the detachment because they cannot see well. So she told me, this every time to play the basketball, several time have the brunt of trauma to the eye. So I think they have the large tear, macro tear occurred after that.
Yeah, probably.
So Nathi, how about your idea?
Pardon? Sorry, yeah.
How about your idea, how about you? How do you treat this case?
Actually, I was doing something else. I'm sorry. I didn't concentrate on your thing.
Okay.
A lovely case, Dr. Webber here. Very nice and very well managed case.
Thank you.
Just a question, would you also have maybe, is it a need of putting a subretinal this, sorry, saline and making a bleb all around the macro brick and kind of massaging it to reduce the size of the macro hole? Would that be also be beneficial?
No, I'm not sure about the idea there because the young, I don't think the the end of surgery, I use a soft tip to use a gentle massage. So make it much a small one. But it's, yeah, there are limitations. They cannot complete the closure perfectly because it's too large, too large. If it's a fresh one, I think I can do because just initiating maybe just the macro tear, maybe just a line tear. But because it's chronic one, I think some for the less over atrophic. So they enlarge the macro tear. We cannot complete the closure just use muscle. I don't think that's work.
Dr. Oshima, I love the way you go to the retina periphery. You've got such great images. And it seems that it's very easy to shave the vitreous off the vitreous base. How do you get such good images? Of course, we have the systems, we have the identification. But even without much identification, you have a good view from the retina periphery. How do you get this image?
Because I know, I also, very simple, I use a very simple same system like you use the recite, I prefer to use the recite. But sometimes I see some other surgeons, they use the recite. The distance between the lens and the cornea is still too far. I close the lens to the cornea, but near and make much wider viewing you can gain. And I also use the visual act to coating the corneal surface to remove the moshing.
All right. And we still have some time left. And if anybody wants to ask any questions for Dr. Oshima, and you are welcome. André Juká, Savabian. André Juká, we are gonna be together in Paris. I mean, I will be there.
Trabeán, merci.
But André Juká, you know, he studied in France, no, in Kansas. And so would like to comment on Dr. Oshima's case?
We can see, you can see the high-speed cutter, you can shave the varroa thing.
You are right, that's great, great.
Yeah, I see it.
Great case, congratulations. Very, very nice image also. Very nice, very bright. It's amazing how technology make these wonderful images get here to all see. Very nice case, congratulations.
Thank you.
I really do appreciate that.
Yeah, I think beautiful case. I think maybe I would have done the same, Yuzuke.
Thank you. All right, that's all. All right, we can go to next case. Then Nathi, we give you my presentation here.
All right. Thank you, Oshima.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. So hope to you next time and give you some interesting case next time. Thank you.
Sure, thank you very much. And Nathi, Natarajan, how are you?
Yes, very good, very good. Very good. Hi, Tanasis.
How is things for Diwali? Vibe have told me next week, we're gonna celebrate Diwali, the light festival thing in all India. How is it going, the preparation, all the arrangements for that?
Well, yeah, very good. And we are also concerned about firecracker injuries, which is terrible every year. And in Delhi, I think there's a ban on because of the air pollution. So they are, I think, lucky. But otherwise, it's come down a lot. But I, as a president of the Asia-Pacific Ophthalmic Trauma Society and the past president of Ocular Trauma Society, we keep writing in the press, telling the children not to use trackers. And even if they use, it should be under the parents' guidance and supervision. And also take all safety measures to protect the eyes and the face because injuries are terrible. And sometimes they're very difficult repair the injuries because one is burning of the tissue as well as mechanical damage too.
All right.
And contaminating.
If you would like to share the screen and present.
Yes. Sorry, Ethan, Hanson?
Just a moment. Authorize, Natarajan, please, put him as co-host. You are already co-host, Natarajan. You are now able to share the screen.
Yes. You know, always the pleasure to be always the pleasure to be, take part in the retinosome. This is retinosome 12. So this is an 80-year-old doctor who had a decreased vision in left eye. It's been one year, gradually worsening. His best criteria, we should look in the right eye was a 624 and left eye was counting finger at 1 meter, pseudo faking. He had a tilted myopic disc in the right eye, cedullated fundus with early signs of myopaclopathy. Left eye had a myopic disc with upper atrophy, posterior staphylomyopic macro hole, suggestive of myopic traction myopaclopathy. So we planned, it was already a vitrectomy, a macro buckling with a C3FA. And this is the fundus picture, we're pretty off. You can see the macro hole and the myopic myopaclopathy. So I, we decided to do a macro buckle. And we are using the T-shaped macro buckle, which is made in India. We have to order and get it. And so you open, do the peritomy. And we actually follow here the, putting the T-shaped buckle, tagging the right eye muscle first. And then lateral rectus, we pass the band and also pass that band behind the inferior oblique, which you'll be seeing. And then also tagging the superior rectus and the oblique so that the band goes all around. And right now completing the tagging of the right eye muscles. So this is the poor right eye first. And finally, the superior rectus. And this is the band which goes around the lateral rectus. And that's the T-shaped buckle. See, the other end of the band is passed through the inferior oblique. You can see the band is being passed through the inferior oblique. And then, which is also then, you can see the other side is now going to the and 240, through the superior rectus and the oblique. And then we have the band tie, which will be there in the opposite quadrant. So now you make sure that there's a T-shaped buckle. The, now we are, now you can see the band is going between the inferior oblique and the lateral rectus. And so that the T-shaped buckle part will go periodically. And we are also suits at the edge of the wedge using the 4081, which will be showing now. And this is to pass, I make a clear flap, like a belt loop to pass the 240 band of the same, which is attached to the here, you have to make the band, the breadth little more so that it can accommodate this band. Which is more than, maybe bigger than the 240 size. You can see that, of course. And then the, on the opposite quadrant, again, using the hockey stick knife, making a bob movement so that there's no suture for this. Except the.
How much you tighten the band, Natarajan?
So usually a moderate height buckle. So if I vitrectomy style, you can check the indirect. And if you're planning to do a vitrectomy following the buckle, usually I tighten more so that you saw, Yuzuke showing the basic decision, which you can do with a tightened band and then loosen the band and have a moderate buckle when you are there appropriately. So the whole idea is to have a moderate buckle because the following vitrectomy, their swell rigidity is changed. And here you have to make sure that the, you can adjust the buckle during the vitrectomy. It's a, if the macro buckle is not in position. So although the both edges are sutured so that it doesn't move and move anteriorly. And then when you tighten it, that the buckle part will be pushed towards the macro so you can check it. We are not using the illuminated tip to check the tip of the buckle. We are actually going to see tunnel and then adjust accordingly. But this way, you can position the buckle and then also tighten it so that it can be in the position. So these are only two sutures we do there. And then you can see now the, we can push the buckle posteriorly. This was a vitrectomy style. And I was soft, so I again injected a gas. It's a non-expansive gas, C3FA, about 10% mixture. And then here you can see that, you asked me that tightening, you can see the buckle which is tightened and then the edges are trimmed so that it doesn't have a buckle exposure. So it's well covered. So now we're removing all the sutures. And I use the glue for closing the conjunctiva and also give a subclinical injection for antibiotics.
Natarajan, may I ask you? You use two needles. One is to inject and another one is to relieve the excessive pressure at the same time?
That's right. Yes, correct. That's what I did. Yes, that's right.
Because it works like an exchange. We do an exchange. And during this exchange, we inject the diluted gas, I guess. And then you remove it with the other hand.
Yes. And then we wanted the buckle height moderate so that then intracollar pressure maintained at the end of the surgery.
Yeah, great, great case. And would like to comment, Vibe? Or Juká, André?
Very well done case, sir. And I like the way you pass the belt all around. And I think the other way in Shankaran Insanity, they use a hockey stick to create the stellar talons as well. The crescent hockey stick as, and sutures. These are the ways in which we can anchor the band all around.
Yes.
So do you also use 42 number band? And in which cases do you use 240? And which case do you use 42 number bands?
No, this one, this T-shaped buckle, which is made in India, it comes with the band. So you don't have a separate band for this. So when you have a macro buckle, I use only this one. It's a little bigger than the 240. So if I'm going to do a vitrectomy buckle, not a macro buckle, then I only use 240.
All right. Any more comments? And I think you switched with Dr. Lem by now. But if you guys want to comment on, still on Natarajan's case. Anthony, Anthony, give us a good thought on, on what are your thoughts of Natarajan's case, Anthony? Have you done some buckles already? Or because you know, there is a tendency for those days not to do as many buckles, but we still do. And what are your thoughts, Anthony Mack, on this case specifically?
That was a fantastic surgical video. We, yeah, we don't do a lot of buckles in our center. Probably on average, most once a month. And obviously, there, we have a few different surgeons. So in the past, I've assisted in proflamps surgery. But I have sort of yet to do the whole procedure myself, being supervised. I actually have a question about closing the peritomy with glue. Is there any specific methods that you employ to sort of close the wound? Because it sounds like a very neat idea.
The one I said. Yes. So usually, I make sure that where I do the peritomy, I don't mark it, but I know, I usually make it in the upper temporal and upper nasal. So I try to get both edges of the peritomy and make sure that when you're doing all this maneuver, don't tear the conjunctiva so that you make sure that the t-nos, which is there also, is brought up. And then when you, I usually if I have a speculum, I remove the speculum. And then I also loosen the lid features if I have so that the lids come down. And then when you put the glue, where both the A and the B, and then it becomes like a sticky. That time, you can hold the forceps, the tooth forcep, and bring it to the limbers and also catch it between the tip of the limbers to the periphery. And then usually it sticks. And then you leave it like that. And I put the solution all around in the 360 degree of the peritomy. And whatever, usually it goes away. Even if it's excess now, it goes away.
So do you use two forceps to pinch, sort of two ends?
Yeah, two, and then pinch it like that, like that, like this. And then wait for a few seconds so that the glue is there. And then you put a patch for about few hours, that means about 12 hours. And the next morning, it's all already glued.
That's great.
And then the so- solution also I keep it separately. So usually I withdraw some little air and then make sure that the solution drops so that slowly it will drop less so that both will mix and the and the come uh when you do one by one.
Is the glue expensive in in India? Because if we use if you use tissue, it's quite expensive here in
Yeah, it is. But Indian, Indian one is about, we can use it, for example, in an operation theater. And we can use it in three, four patients if you have lined up. And then the so that we you have a little and then you change the needle and you can use it. So we we have, I think it's about something like fifty dollars for a adding the one solution. And we can use for three, four patients.
Well, that's very good because that's the main limitation for for us to use it is just the cost.
Yeah. Yes, correct. And actually, we wanted, for a long time, I wanted to do a sutureless buckle. So I do this. So I put four quadrants, the belt, and then the wrap skate sleeve. And then capar conjunctiva this and even 23 gauge you don't suture. And even catrect you don't suture. So you can do a catrect, retract me and buckle without sutures.
Very good. It's very nice.
Yes.
Thank you, Natarajan, again. Always great cases. And I I wanna tell you guys, I think you already know we are
Tanasis will say, Tanasis?
Hi, Tanasis. Tanasis is around. And the next Red Nelson Paris, I'll be in Paris. And uh me and Natarajan are gonna be moderating the the event. It's gonna be a smaller event. So I'll be there and can you join me in Paris, Natarajan? Or I I think it's closer for you than Brazil. But if you could, I'll be there. We are gonna be in a restaurant in front of the tower. The A F L Tower, it's gonna be great.
Well, I'm I'm volunteering to come without participating.
Oh, really? Honor. How far is uh uh Tesalniki from Paris? How far?
Two and a half hour flight.
Half hour? So it's so so close.
Two and a half hour flight. It's thirty, thirty. It's we have a difference of one hour. So or two hours sometimes. So you can go the same time you leave. So you leave at five o'clock in the evening and you have five o'clock in the evening in Paris also.
Wow.
So we enjoy the time, we enjoy the flight. And it's a direct flight, of course. Direct flight from Tesalniki. So it's a cause of a weekend recreational flight.
All right. So I'll be there waiting for you and don't worry, I'm gonna pay the coffee, okay? I'll be waiting for you.
No, 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 no. You you pay the restaurant, the coffee is not
All right.
Coffee is expensive in Paris.
Oh, sweets. If you go to the uh to the near the opera, to Gafet de la Paix, they have, if you take a candy, a sweet and a coffee, it will cost you something like forty euros to thirty-five euros. In order to know what's like in Paris now.
Yes, expensive.
All right. And I wanna, you know, because we are advanced in time. So Andre, Andre Jokha, actually Andre Jokha did his part of his training in the fifteen twenties, which we call in France, in French, cansvan. And if you are ready, Andre, if you wanna present your case, could you tell us, Andre?
Sure.
About the how was your time in France? Because we are going to France, I wish I could be there with you. But because I'm going because of the event that Macron is sponsoring. But it was a good idea to have the Red Nelson Paris there. And how was your time over there? How are your your feelings in when you came back?
Yeah, it was a great time. I was with Professor Alan Godrick at the time at Cansvan. It was really nice. It was at the time, they were beginning mackerel hole surgery. So it was a long time ago. The first mackerel hole surgery done in France at the time was done by Alan Godrick at Cansvan. And I had the opportunity to be there at this 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 time. It was the beginning of the nineties. At this time, we still did not have the white Anglo lens to perform the retract me. So it was prismatic lens, it was much harder. But it was really a great time. Old time. So may I go on? And are you seeing my screen?
Sure. You just have to enlarge it a bit.
So I Okay. Uh I'm going to present you this technique that we have been improving a little bit more. And we have already presented why we we have many options to implant intraocular lens in absence of capsular support. You can use anterior chamber lens, lens fixation, posterior chamber lens to the iris. That we enjoy that, there is good lens for that. There is transiscleral, transiscleral, scleral sutured posterior I O L and intraiscleral fixation. Uh the intraiscleral fixation techniques was made popular by Yamani and now it's widespread all over the world. But the Brazilian guy, Canabra, had one technique that he used acrous lens to to fixate it without using the optic. And Asia improved it, published in twenty twenty uh technique where he he used this flange to intraocular lens. We we read this paper and we tried to see how how resistant it was. And we just took this hydrophilic I O L to try to see if it was really resistant, could not tear the I O L or or this is a six O prulene, a very cheap material to use and it's widespread available. We don't have to use many things. You see that we are just seeing making this resistance testing uh to see if this is adequate to hold the intraocular lens. And you see that's it's very strong, we're trying to, it's really nice. And let me, yeah. And then we just have this case of capsular bag luxation, it's the first case, one of the first case. And we did, the technique is really simple. This is a uh an intraocular lens, you see, that's a hydrophilic intraocular lens. This lens cannot go in the in the circles. So we just we just pierce the intraocular lens uh at the junction of the optic and optic zone. And we just do that and do this flange. We know this going to hold because we tested before outside the eye. And then we are going to put this uh this other side and we do that in both sides, you see. Now we, this lens was already inside the eye. We do not have to calculate the intraocular lens power. That sometimes it's not available. You are in the middle of the surgery and the lens drops. And you have, sometimes you have not the adequate intraocular lens power. So you can uh use the same lens. Of course, this is also cheaper and more accurate to the intraocular lens power. We're just using a insulin needle to to do this. And it's really not complicated. It's just a safe flange. And we do the other side as well, you see. Two point five millimeters to not touch the iris and one hundred and eighty degrees uh distance between the two. So here we are just doing the other. And you see that's various, sometimes the lens tilt a little bit. It's it's not complicated, it's very simple. And we just put the lens back. Oh, and you see now we have a good uh good distance and do this. Some friends of mine said that maybe this is not good enough because you have only two points of fixation. And since Euclid is said in geometry that you need four points to get a plane, two points you only have a line. Then we just this. Okay. We just thought about something else. This technique is good for hydrophilic and hydrofocal lens. Uh of course, that the old P M A lens is not adequate because you cannot pierce them. But any intraocular lens, multifocal intraocular lens, we have done it, it's good. It's a quick procedure. You don't have to do peritomy or scleral flaps. There's no optic damage that often can occur with Yamani technique. And you can adjust the length of the suture and the position of the intraocular lens easily. So it's good. And it's, of course, it have maybe some disadvantage, the U G H syndrome. Maybe it's avoidable to put a little bit back the intraocular lens, that's two point five millimeters. You may get some conjunctival erosion, but we never saw. And this may cause an otomitis or the lens can tilt because you have only two points. And we have to follow up to to see long-term stability, that we believe that we will have that. So we just modify a little bit. And this is a four-flange technique. You see that we are using a acrous intraocular lens. So this was more planet. And we see now we can do that easily with four points of fixation. And this is going to be, of course, more stable and less chance of tilting because now you have four points of of fixation. Okay? You see the the intraocular lens? And then we we just put in it inside the eye. This is an acrous lens, so we did not have the injector. So we just put it with a forceps. But of course, you can use the injector if you have one. And this is, it's the same, but four points of fixation. So with the same needles and still the six O prulene using to So now you have four flanges, you see. And you just go to doing the flange. And after that, you just put it under the tendon and you it will not erode. So you see, it's it's very doable also with acrous intraocular lens. And it's it's a very cheap procedure and very technically easy procedure. Oh, well, yeah. Yeah, that's it.
Congratulations, Andre.
I should stop.
Very good case and great images. Your technique, how do you compare your technique with our fellow friend here, Dr. Durval? He did a technique, a similar technique. He showed in the World Congress recently. And he got the he got the prize for for the technique. But I think your your technique is quite similar or if not the same. How how do you compare the way, the materials you used both in for the surgery?
Yeah, yeah, Durval is a great guy and he he deserved to win the prize. I I just presented here in the Red Nelson some a little bit before he did win the prize. He did win the prize. But it's a little bit different. There is some tricks that is different. He used to pierce the the optic, not the lens itself. This is adequate sometimes because you have one piece intraocular lens. But you have three pieces intraocular lens, you cannot pierce the optic, isn't it? So this is more suitable for any kind of intraocular lens. And there is still an issue that piercing the optic, sometimes you can tear the optic. So this is more, and another point is that you don't know exactly the point of the optic that you're going to pierce. So if you do a symmetrical piercing, the lens may be tilting a little bit more. If you pierce in the junction of the optic and the optical zone, eh eh the chance of this issue of asymmetrical piercing is is less of a big, bigger problem. So it's different because you pierce the optic and we pierce the junction of the optic and the optical zone. So for this reason, I think this technique is is more widespread, doable in different situations.
All right. Anybody wants to comment on the technique? We have here posted for commenting, Dr. Lam and Francine. Francine has just arrived and she was around and she's gonna be the next presenter. Dr. Lam, do you like this technique?
It is very clever, Andrea. Um I like to ask you, how do you determine the how much you're going to trim on the six O poling for you to kind of cauterize the end and making sure that the I O L sitting in a in a proper plane? Like, how do you estimate the the amount of poling that you need to trim between the two side?
Yes, it's a very good question. It's the bigger issue because it it seems very easy just but it's really a trick. The trick, there is a trick there. The trick is that you pull off and then you just do that. And it will retrace a little bit and then it will be stuck on the on the sclera. The the trick is just to pull it a little bit more than enough. And then you do the flange. And it will retrace a little bit and will suck on the sclera. Wow.
How do you make sure the other side is the same? Because if they're not the same distance, then you might have a bit of like posterior
Tilt problem, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. We, before we do that, we just, we can tighten it and and see how it is symmetrical and the I O L is well on the plane. Uh we just do at the the exact same amount. We just pull it a little bit and we know that we just pull it a little bit and do that and it will retrace a little bit and we do exactly the same on the other side. We are preparing a paper to publish and we are analyzing uh the the position of the lens with O C T to see there is some tilting. And we are, we have not published that yet, but we are working on that. And it seems that tilting is a is not a bigger problem than with other techniques that we have seen and performing as well.
That's very good. Looking forward to see the publications, to learn the technique. And thank you for sharing it. It's very clever.
Yeah, that's, there is many guys that have been contributing to that. Asia was the first, Yamani, of course, that we change it a little bit because it's not easy also have a good optic and and this is, you can use with any kind of intraocular lens. Asia just published that with piercing the I O L outside the eye. But we can do that inside the eye as well or outside the eye if you you have more planet situation. or outside the eye if you have more planet situation. But sometimes you are in the middle of the surgery and you have the IOL and you don't know what kind of IOL, power of the IOL is there. And sometimes it's happened that the IOL or the capsule art bag itself just drops and you have no idea of the intraocular power of the lens. So you have the option of leaving the patient. If you are putting an IOL that you, you're not sure that is best intraocular power for the patient. So with this technique, you can save the day and just fixate the IOL. Sometimes you have three pieces intraocular lens, but other times it's not like the first video that we showed. It's not adequate intraocular lens to put on the supus. So this can save the day easily and it's not expensive. It's very cheap and the five, six O proline is a very cheap thing and every block have.
Yeah, it's also very strong, so it's very doable.
Yeah, it's very doable. We tested the resistances, it's very, it's very good. You cannot tear the intraocular lens or it, the proline is really as thick as the optic of the intraocular lens like MA of Algon. It's the same thickness, it's the same thing.
All right, thank you, André. Always a great case. And I would like, I would like to invite Francini. Francini, if you want to comment on the last case and if you want to start displaying your case, it's an honor to have you here again, Francini.
Thank you, my friends. Good morning to everybody. Buenos dias. It's an honor to be here. André, I've seen this case before. It's a very beautiful technique. So I think you should really publish this. And congratulations, that's all. Well, I'm going to present, I'm going to share my screen. Just a second, please. Can you see my screen?
Yeah, perfectly.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm going to present macular buckling for high myopia macro hole. This was a case that we did with José Afonso Ribeiro Ramos at USP Ribeirão Preto. These are fellows that work in the surgery with us, Saís Bassi, Juliana Vinga. And this is a very interesting case and I would like to hear your comments after that. And this girl, this, it was a woman of 44 years old with very high myopia. And she was complaining of visual loss 10 days before she arrived at the service. And her visual acuity was 10 over 400 with minus 29 diopter at right eye. And at the left eye, she had minus 25 diopter, myopic diopter with a macro hole, with hand movement, I'm sorry. And we saw a nuclear cataract at the right eye and also at the left eye. And here you can see the fundus of the right eye and the left eye. So you see that she had a very high, very big staphyloma on both eyes. And we had a macro detachment, a posterior pole detachment with a macro hole at the left eye. That was the item that had hand movements. So we tried to do an OCT, but it was very difficult because with this high myopia it's very hard to have a very good acquisition of image. What we did was to put her contact lens, but even with the contact lens, it was not possible to have a very good image. But here you can see that the retina is detached and that we have a macro hole here. And we have also probably a posterior alloyed also adherent at some part of the retina. And we also did ultrasound and the anterior posterior diameter was 32.99 millimeters. So a very big eye. And so we thought about what to do and we know that macro holes in high myopia eyes present a very high probability of failure, of not closing. So, and we know also that we have this mechanical traction because of the posterior staphyloma. And the long axle and the IPR is poor, the function is poor. So sometimes we don't have very good reattachment of the retina because we don't have the bone of IPR. And we have also the chloride determination. So what we thought was to do a combined detractomy and a macro buckling for this case. And surgery was planning with a macro buckling, fac without the IOL, posterior vitrectomy, filling of limited membrane and also C3F8 gas. So we know the indication for macro buckling surgery. And it was described and was performed by Scapins in 1957 and 40 years before the vitrectomy was performed by Ackman. It was what they used at the time to reattach the retina. And it's also indicated for macrophobe scissures, macro detachment, laminar hypobigness, macro hole, fail of vitrectomy for macro action because of the staphyloma. And also it was described for upper pit macrophages. And so based at Barbara Parolin's article, so we was trying to understand here in Brazil, how could we do this macro buckling? Because we don't have a macro buckling here. So she presented this osteosynthesis plaque with sponge and this leaf. This is a band with lumen. So we find that it was a plaque of osteosynthesis for neurosurgery traumas. And what we did was similar that what she did. It was to put this plaque inside this band and at the end of this L-shaped plaque, we put the sponge at the end of this, like here. So we did the surgery. First of all, we have to do parasyntesis because when you manipulate the posterior pole, we can have a high intraocular pressure. So we release this pressure before we start. And then we, as it was the first time, what we did was to leave the plaque bigger than it should be because we want to understand how it would arrive at the posterior pole and fit it. And we were afraid of the optic nerve. So first of all, we did the buckle. We, and then we tried. As we didn't have fiber illumination to put at the end of the sponge, what I did was to manipulate the fundus to see if it was under the macro. So as we see, it was under the macro. Then we took off. And here you see that we have less holes than we had before. Then we cut them. It's very hard to cut them. You have to have a very good scissors, very hard scissors or another kind of instrument to take this off. And then we, now we positioned the macro buckling at the right position. And then we sutured this, as you can see here, at the body of the plaque and after at the end of the sleeve. And we performed ultrasound, yes, to see if the plaque was well positioned under the macro. So it was, you can see this flat here. And we find that after, I'm going to show you, that it was 3 millimeter compared to the baseline, 3 millimeters less than the baseline. So after this, we performed the fecal without IOL. We sutured the corner and then we performed the vitrectomy. Then we use brilliant blue to do the IOL filling. And then we double used the brilliant blue to be sure that we had had take off all the IOL. And then we did an exchange with and then performed a laser. And we finished it with gas. And it was the first day after the surgery. I'm going to show you here. So this is the first ultrasound baseline here, 32.99 and the ultrasound during the surgery with 30 millimeters. And here we have the first day of post-operation. The second, I'm here seven days before. And here we have almost two months after the surgery. See that we have a very good mobility of the eye. She didn't have diplopia. She didn't have a limitation of eye movement. And she didn't complain about pain at two months after the surgery. At the first days, right after the surgery, she complained about pain a little, but it was a long surgery because we stayed more or less four hours at the operation room doing this with very carefully. And she had a little pain, but the implant did not disturb her. It was something that she perhaps you hardly can see. And she wasn't disturbed by the pain. Here you can see, if you ask her to look down, you can see the implant here. But Barbara Parolin also showed it here in the bigger image. You can see it here. And this is the first, the seven days after surgery. And this is almost 60 days after surgery. You can see that the hole didn't close. Even we did a very good IOL filling, but the vision was better. She improved it to 20 under 100. It was better than hand movements. She's happy. And here is 30 days after surgery. You can see the posterior pole, the aspect is a little better than the baseline. We have some complications that we have, we should pay attention to. Perforative, we can have sleepage or misalignment of the buckle. We can have sudden increase of IOP. We can have supercoroidal hemorrhage because of the vortex vessels. So we have to be very gentle to manipulate these eyes. And post-operative, we can have excessive pain or inflammation. We didn't have it, thanks God. High IOP, we didn't have also. We didn't have any kind of hemorrhaging and even subarachmacker hemorrhage that appears early after the surgery. Misalignment of the buckle position, we didn't have also. The buckle was very good position, in a very good position. You should pay attention that the buckle should not touch the optic disc. This is a very, you should take care of this because you can have problems with fiber layers. So you can have this optic nerve. And another thing that you should pay attention to is to, when open the conjuntaiva, you can preserve, you may preserve the tendon also. Because when you do the suturing, you first sutured the tendon and after the conjuntaiva, not to have erosion after an exposition of the buckle. And diplopia and restriction of mobility that is reported, but also we didn't have. And what we found after all this is that she has this internal macro hole at the right eye. And we proposed another surgery, but she is, she wants to wait a little before she thinks about doing some kind of surgery at the right eye. What we think and we would comment is the, maybe this is the better time to do this surgery because if she has a macro hole as the other eye, probably it will be a surgery more difficult than it would be just positioning a macro buckling here. So this is my presentation. I would like to thank Rodrigo, José Afonso and all the team that stay with us at USP Ribeirão Preto. And I would like to hear your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Francini. Such nice images, great cases.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the case. And if anyone would like to... Oh, yes, Dr. Setti, want a comment?
Excellent presentation of Francini, very nicely done, surgery very innovative. Just want to ask you, do you think just placing the macro buckle would have sufficed and not doing a vitrectomy and island filling? And you think the intraoperative OCT has reached a stage in which we can actually, you know, in such a high myop, get to know whether the posterior pole has attached because of the buckle?
Yeah, this is what we thought at the beginning. But as we didn't know how to do it, where to buy it. And then we found that we didn't have nothing similar in Brazil. So we had to find out how to perform the buckle. And I didn't know where to find those plaques. And as my husband is a neurosurgeon and when I show it to him, he told me, "Ah, this is a plaque that we used to suture the bone when we do the crinectomy." So I said, "Ah, that's nice." So I needed one. And then I was, I went to the hospital to find if they had there. So it took a little time, a little time. It took almost three weeks until we could perform the surgery. And then the retina was attached. So we had to perform the track. To the right eye, probably this is, this would be the best time to do it because we could only put the buckle under the macro and stop the staphyloma to leave her and to evolve it. And yeah, to evolve it to a macro buckle, but she doesn't want to do this now.
Your comments, Dr. Lam. Do you, in such a case, approach with a macro buckle along with a vitrectomy? Or do you like to do either one of them?
I agree with you that Francini, you've done a wonderful job and very innovative in your kind of, your homemade buckle for the macro buckle. In truth, I haven't done any macro buckle myself, so I don't, I can't speak from experience. And but I think in the setting when you have a retro detachment and associated with a macro hole in a high myop like this, I would think doing the combined procedure will increase your chance of success. If you only have a very localized detachment associated with a macro hole, then I would think a buckle to the, the posterior buckle to the macro will probably be sufficient without taking on the vitrectomy part as well. So I think the fact that there is already a coexisting detachment and I think it's worthwhile doing the vitrectomy. And it's also true that I have the similar experience that I have a patient with macro hole with really small amounts of retina fluid. By the time we arranged the surgery, she had a much bigger detachment than she was presented in the operating room. So you have to be very careful with this type of patients that they can progress relatively quickly from a localized macro hole with subretina fluid phobia to a large detachment.
Yeah, it's true. Thank you, Dr. Lam.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you all. And Marcelo is not in yet, but he's just came. So we... So he, I will ask if you could, Atanasios. Firstly, how is your experience, Atanasios, in the macular buckle? Do you guys in Greece like using a macular buckle? Do you usually perform it or it's not so, so common surgery?
I have set my beliefs for macular buckle surgery. In the old days, when they have to dissect the, the muscles in order to make a rotation, put the macular buckle in place, that was the old way of doing it. And also they used to that for the pit, for the optic pit for that. But not anymore. And my experience was a trainee by Parolini Barbera, who was in TVRS, as you were, in August this year. And she came to us with a lot of macular buckles and she, we were trained, a whole bunch of us, 50 people, we were trained how to put the macular buckle in a, in a pig eye, an artificial eye. And I think, I saw the video. You did everything. I mean, you didn't leave just the thing that can say, "Why did you remove the ILM? Why didn't you do the vitrectomy? Why did you do this or that?" You did everything in order to put it back in place. And I enjoy the technique and I enjoy the way that you put it. And enjoy the ingenuity that you used to, to do everything on your own. But I never used it myself. But I'm just one of the 50 people that was trained last August to do this. And the last news that I've got is that Barbera has a new one, a new buckle that you can buy now. So things are going to become easier for us and I can get into it. So my experience, my personal experience is only the wet lab. But congratulations, I really loved your video. I love your ideas. I love your surgical thinking. Really appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And also I want to call you now, Atanasios. You know, I was, I have your video here if you want me to share. But your video is so amazing, you know, I couldn't stop watching it. Because such nice images. It seemed that we were, you know, inside the eye together with the Miller cells. Such great images, you know, congratulations. And if you want me to...
Yes, my idea, thank you. But my idea over this video, why to show this video, is that when you show a 3D video of 3D, you just have two little boxes. Can you listen to me now?
Yeah.
Are we connected? Because I lost. Okay.
Oh yeah, we are connected.
Okay, you can hear me. You have to transfer the 3D to 2D in order to be able to show, because then you show the results, the real results. The reason for showing this video is not, it's just to see the depth of vision that you got with 3D and the abilities you got. And I got to thank Yosima for showing us the 27-gauge surgery so many years ago. And we can use 27-gauge with 3D, which is much easier for us. Because to go through a trocker, a valve trocker with a soft tip needle without having a 3D, it's rather cumbersome for us. It's not so easy. It bends, it doesn't stick. But you will see while on the video, you will see that this 17, 27-gauge hole looks like a pitless huge circle that can get in and out very easily. So it's helping us. And that's the idea. And the bottom line is that the technique of macular hole, when you finish the macular hole, if you go close to it, there's sometimes there's some vitreous engulfed inside the hole. So you have to remove this clot of vitreous that you can see in the video. And we can see it only if you have such kind of resolution. If you don't have such kind of resolution, with such magnification, because that's the idea. You have a huge magnification with a very nice resolution. If you magnify anything with a microscope, then you lose the resolution. So with this huge magnification, I would like to show you how new things are happening while you're doing a straightforward macular hole.
All right. And do you want me to share your video?
Let me try, let me try to, to get it myself so I can stop it and go forward. If I want to show you some details, let's see if I can get into it.
Okay, okay.
I have it already.
I also want to thank... Not yet. Hasn't, and...
Just a minute, I need to...
You did not display yet.
Share the screen first.
Okay. Guilherme, Dr. Atanasios is allowed to share the screen? Or co-host? Oh yeah, you are allowed to share the screen.
Am I allowed to?
Yeah, you are allowed, yeah.
Okay, let me see if I can...
I want to say hello to a good friend of ours. It's Dr. Mozar, Mozar Melo, our friend here from Goiania, retina specialist. He did, he's, you know, they have at Vier, the hospital here, they have 3D ingenuity. So, Mozar, you're invited for next meetings to show your cases. And Mozar, he did his fellowship back years ago at Bascom Palmer with Dr. Smidi. And actually, I personally spent some time with Dr. Smidi there while visiting Bascom Palmer. He's great. And thank you, Mozar, for showing up. And okay, you are sharing, Atanasios, if you want to start.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So we start with the 27-gauge in 2D, 3D. And we're going, as Yosima used to say, we're going much closer to the eye. If we want to have a wide... You see how, if you go closer, how big becomes the screen? And now you can see the test of the canacord that we're showing here. It's not such an unusual thing, but the thing that I would like to point out, that in the same time, after removing the vitreous, you see that the vitreous, as in usual in macular hole, there's a cortical attachment to the hole. Probably it was this cortical attachment that produced the hole in the first place. But the idea is to see that you see the disc, you see the vessels and you see the tip of the vitrectomy on the back of the eye. So that's the depth of focus you've got. You don't have just one plane of focus. And at the end, when you try to remove the posterior cortical vitreous, nothing is lost. I mean, you can see the vessels clearly. You can see all the vessel, the lumen even here. And this is very important for, for macular surgery, if you can do that. And it's a relatively common hole. And now look how you get in and out from a huge hole with a flute needle or with a vitrectomy tip in 27-gauge. So that means that you got, your life becomes easier, not your surgery. And then we use the, this instrument, Alcon instrument...
Fine, finesse, finesse.
Yes. In order to scratch a little bit the area. Because I think the most difficult thing is to begin the ILM and not to grasp the eye directly. You can see the shadow of the vessels here. That's what I want to show you, not the finesse so much. As to see the detail on the huge magnification between here. You have a zoom... So with brilliant blue, I always do double dyeing. I do the first one. I don't like to wait a lot. I remove it and then if it's not good enough, I'm scratching again. And I'm just doing repeatedly in order to find a safe place to lift the ILM. People don't stay so much in the beginning of how to create the first lip, safe lip to remove the ILM. I see from my fellows that the most damages become, when you try mechanically to remove the ILM, you might produce more damage than literally as it is. So we tried to use this soft way. And 27-gauge, you see the detail and the magnification of 27-gauge. They cannot hold it because they have a very small tip. They cannot hold a big chunk of ILM. So you have to do it step by step. But you can have the detail of seeing exactly where to grasp and what to do. Because you have the depth of vision. And another thing for the people who are over 50, you must remember, when you're getting older, the depth of vision is reduced. People don't know it. And the other thing is that you're losing your accommodation with a microscope, but you don't lose your accommodation with the ingenuity. So if you have accommodation, a depth of vision and a huge magnification without losing the resolution, this is how you can do in detail 27-gauge. Because 27-gauge needs to be detailed. And you can use the ILM removal at the edge of the, sorry, from the vessels. That means that you have control over your surgery. This is exactly what 3D is showing to us. That you can have absolutely control because you see what you're doing in a very big magnification. And also, your audience, the people that are working together in the theater are very happy because they participate. They see exactly what you're looking at. Not like the microscope, where people in a dark room and people in the nurses and the, and the helping hands don't like to help you there because they don't see anything and they don't participate. After a couple of surgeries with ingenuity, we have an audience of the theater people that they say, "Don't, don't pull it so much." I mean, you have audience. Because they are participating in the theater. And you can teach a lot of people with 3D in the same day. You can have 500 people looking for exactly what you're doing, like now. At the end, this is the thing that I would like a little bit to stop if I can. I'm going with a soft tip. I'm getting, I have a very, you see, I'm removing the air. And then I'm going with a soft tip at the lip of my, of my hole. And I'm waiting for a little bit and then I remove some more fluid. I'm just waiting to have, because I believe that the closing of the hole is depending. And then I'm going next to it again. And you see now, a small, so it, a small portion of vitreous is coming out while manipulating just the lip. I'm not touching the, the hole. I'm just waiting ahead of it. And if you allow me, I think... Sorry, I did something, but it doesn't matter. I did something bad.
Yeah, it was at the end of the surgery with the next change.
But it was...
Very good, good images.
I just wanted to repeat to show you again, the, to show you again the, the removal of a little bit of vitreous that was at the hole. Sorry for that.
Atanasios, I got a question.
Yes.
That loop from Alcon instrument, do you use it all your macular surgeries? Or you vary it from instrument to instrument?
No, I'm using, I'm having only, only the 27-gauge loop. And I'm using it in all instruments that I have, if it's 23 or 25, it doesn't matter. I'm using the 27 because it is soft. And in the beginning, I was literally afraid to push it against the retina. I hate tunnel scrapers or something like that. Because the tunnel scraper or something hard that is scratching the retina is mobilizing the pigment epithelium underneath. And you have scotomas, small scotomas afterward, so you can make it here. But I think this is a very easy way to start the ILM removal. Of course, there's something else, it's the cost. It's another cost adding. But it makes my life easier if I can afford it, if a patient can afford it, I use. And is anybody from Alcon around there? No. Sometimes I re-sterilize.
Yeah, we are from Brazil, we know what you mean.
Sorry for that. It doesn't have a hole, it doesn't have a loop, it can be dried. So plasma is efficient and it doesn't break so easily.
Very cool, very, very good, Atanasios. Pablo, Pablo, are you around? You want to comment? Pablo is participating in Retinosum for the first time. Pablo Sibiles is from Paraguay. Is the country next to us here, very close. And we are honored that we have Pablo this time. He's going to be presenting shortly as well. As we have, we are ahead of time on the list, which is cool. And if anybody wants to comment anything more and/or not, then I would like to pass over to Marcelo. Okay, Francine?
I just, I, I just want to comment, to comment on, Dr. Nasonasios, is that I also do this small aspiration over the macular hole at the end of the surgery. Because sometimes you really have a small amount of vitreous there. And I think you may put the borders more closer when you do this. And about the finesse, I saw that you tried sometime before you, you had the IOL peeling, the initial of the IOL. And there's something, I, I like it, but I don't love it actually. Because I'm not very fond of manipulating the retina so much. Because sometimes you have to manipulate, you don't know how hard you can, you should do it to start the peeling. So I prefer use the...
Direct forceps. Use the forceps?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, use the forceps. I, I had COVID very, very closely from these days. I sometimes forget the words. I used before, but now it's a little bit worse. But it's, it's going to be better. And so what I was to say is that finesse, sometimes when you have, for instance, a very defined ribto, it's very good to, to, to put the, to, to put the retina over. Because the loop is very nice to manipulate the retina. But I thought it's very nice what it did. But I'm, I'm a little bit afraid of it. I don't know if I should be. It's my experience.
Most of the people, even me, were using a lot of pinch because the technique, pinching, is taught by Didier de Cornois many, many years ago. It's just trying to lift something. And if the, the retina is mobile with your lifting, you leave it. And you go back again and you lift a little bit. And if it's mobile, you leave it. But this way... This is a technique that you have to learn. With the finesse, it's for, for starters. It's one of the best instruments. Because even if you press it again a little bit harder than you should, it doesn't go down, it bends. And it doesn't resist so much. It had been tried a lot of time. And if you push it harder, it will not make any damage. So it's good for the fellows to start with. Lot of laughs on that.
Oh yeah. I just muted them and they might not be watching. Okay, no problem. And Marcelo, welcome. Marcelo is also our neighbor here as Pablo Sibiles in Paraguay, our neighbor in Brazil and South America. Actually, after a long time, we found out that I have some relatives in Bolivia as well. So Marcelo is kind of my cousin. Marcelo, welcome. And thank you for being with us again since the beginning of Retinosum. I remember when we first talked about Retinosum years ago, not years ago, almost two years, I guess. And we decided that we would start this program. You were giving me some ideas. And we decided that we should go ahead with that. Invited Dr. Lamb and other doctors. And the meeting, as Dr. Lamb, in one of his presentations as a keynote speaker, he mentioned the thing became international. So it was good that we have the opportunity to spread, you know, these knowledge and surgeries and techniques from all over the world. Thank you, Marcelo. You are welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Hudson, and thank you to the Retinosum family. It's always a pleasure to be here. And I'm going to share my, my screen.
my screen. Okay, so I'm going to start talking about the combined surgery in high myops, when you perform combined bietrectomy sclerobacal surgery, which is the best way to do it. There are many ways to start. Maybe first the bacal, then the bietrectomy, or bietrectomy first of bacal, then it depends. So in this case, I'm going to show you some difference in the technique. So this is about a female high myop, fifty-one years old. It was admission with a left eye regmatous retinal detachment with the presence of inferior lesions at six o'clock meridian. The contralateral eye was with myopic maculopathy. The procedure in the left eye was a conjunctival peritomy, bietrectomy, to later leave the vitreous chamber with air, that's the point that I want to mention. Remove trockers and place sclerobacal. Then trockers are repositioned to place air maintained and end illuminated to check retinal indentation, and then ending with air exchange silicone oil. So I will show you the procedure. As you know, eighty percent of my surgeries are with 3D. I use the Haxtride microscope and the Oertly platform, the OS4. We're going to, this is a pseudophakic eye. We are going, in this case, perform first the bietrectomy. We can see the retina detachment, the inferior retina detachment. I like to use the trampolin all the time for recognizing the vitreous, doing some bietrectomy. As you can see, we found the retina break and we are removing the subretinal fluid. It's kind of dense, yellowish, and we start to remove it. Maybe one or two weeks of retina detachment the patient present. In this first part, we are going to reattach the retina and then attach the retina and then put some laser and the air flow exchange. Then finishing the procedure, we are going to remove the trockers and start to perform the peritomy, the conjunctival peritomy. Recognizing the extraclear muscles and putting the sclerobacal. We already measure where we want it to be, the sclerobacal is at two forty, two point five millimeters. And once we know where to position it, at the end, we're going to adjust. But right now, we are just positioning the sclerobacal. Then we are going to put again all the trockers to see how indentation is working in this case. Sometimes I put some pressure in the sclerobacal so I can see how indentation is going to work. But at the end, I try to readjust. If there is too much pressure on it, or I can leave a little bit. Then we are putting some laser in peripheral zones. And finish the technique with silicone oil. So that's what I wanted to show you. I don't know, I got some questions. Which one do you prefer when you are doing a combined surgery? Starting with the bietrectomy first and then sclerobacal? Or first sclerobacal and the bietrectomy? For me, this is a very interesting procedure when we leave all the eye with air so it can move the glove. I can move better the glove and I can do my maneuvers more comfortable. So that's the case. Thank you very much.
I always prefer to start with the bacal and then go ahead with bietrectomy. I think it's a little confusing to start with if you direct me and then switch to the bacal, Sasa Motto. Maybe you could get a, I don't know, maybe this coroidal detachment in the lower intraocular prep or lower intraocular pressure or whatever. So I would prefer start with the bacal.
Okay.
Any other comments?
I also prefer to start with and I sometimes when I want to release or to stabilize the vitreous base, I use the two forty. But I prefer use a forty-two band. A little bit, it's a little, you know, it's a little bit longer and a little bit thick than the two forty. And when you have bigger ruptures at the periphery or sometimes it gives you more indentation. And I do exactly as you do. I use the, this, this, I don't, I never know how to name it. This sclera, this small sclera, I put ports that you do at the sclera and then I finish with this sclera band. For me, it's challenging because now that I'm at Usperi Beram Preto, they used to switch the band and I think it's not elegant. And you may have a disruption of the bacal or and you speak. Sometimes they don't switch back, yes?
May I?
Of course, please.
Yes, the thing is that there's a lot of things that we have changed. And one is that you can, with the valve trockers, you can put the valve trockers before the bacal surgery and then try the bacal and then go to the bietrectomy. Because just bacal, just trockers, they don't get in your view or in your way while moving the eye back and forth. Of course, the other thing you have when you have ready the trockers is that if you have by accident perforating the sclera a little bit more and you have some drainage, we just have the infusion a little bit to open the infusion and keep the eye firm. So if you have a soft eye, you don't want to control, you want to control the eye. So I prefer to put the trockers, the valve trockers first and then do the bacal. The other thing I do differently is that with the two forty bands, you have to know, you have to be experienced, you have to know how much to tie the bacal. Because you have a bietrectomized eye that it doesn't resist. It's not like the bacals we used to put in eyes without bietrectomy. If you have a bietrectomized eye, you don't know the resistance of the eye because you have a soft eye. And you can do, you can overtie it very easily in the next day. So the one thing that you don't need to tie at all is a three-millimeter sponge. If you just do the same inserting three hundred sixty, a three-millimeter sponge, you don't need to tie it at all. You just suturing it in four quadrants and that's it. You tied it in the end and you leave it like it is. You don't need to tie it. So it doesn't matter if you drain or not drain or anything. And the other thing you have to remember is if you do a retina detachment and you have to put a bacal, you have to drain before you start bietrectomy. Because if you do any drainage after starting a bietrectomy, you have any incrustation. And this is the things that you have to remember when you do combined surgery with bacal and bietrectomy. It's not just putting a bacal or doing a bietrectomy. It has a combination of difficulties that they might need an experienced surgeon to do that. And these little tips that I gave you, it's just for people to make it easier, not more complicated. And we keep the bacal, not as Giboni was used to say, in order to be able to see the periphery or reducing the size of the eye. We put the bacal for the inferior tiers when you have inferior multiple tiers. Or we have, we have discussed that, or we have this three hundred sixty posterior base alignment behind the vitreous base. So you have multiple tiers around three hundred sixty. Then we use the bacal. So we have to have indications for that. We have to have a knowledge of what you're doing. And the steps we are doing is, for example, nobody knows that you should not drain while you're doing bietrectomy. You should not outside do drainage when you do bietrectomy. I don't know what your ideas on that, but I really have put steps on my surgery with bacals.
No, it's a very interesting comment that you have, Atanasius. One of the, it was practically one eye, the other was with maculopathies. Then one of my problems in myopic eyes also is the coroidals. You have to be very careful with coroidals. And in this situation, when I perform this surgery, I see that it's more comfortable move the eye with air, with air, the presence of air in the vitreous chamber. I can move out the eye more easily and more delicate. So for me, it's working. Sometimes I know there are some other techniques that can work. So it depends the patient also.
For myopic eye, for myopic eye, you have to remember that the myopic sclera is very, very thin. So suturing and putting a bacal in the myopic eye, it's a whole different story. So I think I agree with you that you have to have a fixed eye. You have to have a firm eye. I agree with you, Myvisho. Beautiful soul. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a comment. Marcelo, can you hear me?
Yes, Pablo, yes.
I had a good experience with a bigger bacal. I use two eighty-seven bacal, three hundred sixty. And I put the bacal before the bietrectomy. And I cut the bacal tight. I started the bietrectomy and when I performed core bietrectomy, I cut the bacal almost eight millimeters. And it helped me a lot with the vitreous base shaving. I see not a lot of people use the two eighty-seven. But I have a very good experience and I think very helpful for the peripheral vitreous. And I have one question. The patient had detached vitreous? Your patient?
My patient. No, I, the vitreous, as a high myopic, it was kind of detached. Yes, but not totally. Because it was a young patient, fifty-one, so it was partially detached.
And you didn't consider to do sclerobacal in alone?
Alone? Because it was inferior and the lesion was six PM, not periphery. It was para macular, so it was kind of complicated from there, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pablo. Welcome again to the Retinosum twelve. Your first presentation here. You are very welcome. We are neighbors here, as I said. So it's good to have you here, Pablo. Buenos dias for nosotros. And now,
Buenos dias.
Buenos dias. This of Tommo Cordoba is a larger meeting after we finish Retinosum. You are invited to visit the platform of Tommo Cordoba. There are more specialties and tomorrow, they are going to bring, Tiziana is going to bring us to very good live surgeries. And you're going to love to watch it tomorrow, the whole day tomorrow. And today, after Retinosum, you are invited to register to Tommo Cordoba and see, it's a very good program. And thank you very much. And I would like to invite Dr. Vibhav Sethi from the Arun Adaya team, our friend since the beginning of Retinosum. Actually, it was Dr. Aaron, his father, who introduced me to Vibhav. And he's been with us since long. We participated with him in the last meeting of Pan Ophthalmologica. We had the special session of Retinosum over there. And so if we count this Retinosum twelve session and one more, the Retinosum Cake and Pie Expo, which would make it thirteen. And the next one, the other one that happened, Pan Ophthalmologica fourteen. And the fifteenth event is going to be in France, Paris, next week. So it's a pleasure, it's an honor to be with you since the beginning of the pandemics for those meetings. Thank you, Vibhav. You are welcome.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hudson, and really enjoyed the session with lovely talks and lovely discussion. Can I share my screen? Could you give me the rights to share the screen, please?
Give me, please, Vibhav Sethi for co-host, okay? Yes, he's going to put your co-host in line.
Can you see my presentation?
Yep, it's shown.
Perfect. So I'll be presenting. Good evening, good morning, everyone. And I'll be presenting a case in Retinosum twelve of a new type of lens, twelve fixated lens called a CMT Flex IOL. This is being made by my colleague, Dr. Nivian, who's in South India, in Chennai. And with the help of an Apaswamy's company in India, they've come up with a cheap lens, which is quite interesting. So this is a patient with a sublexated lens with a one hundred degrees. So I tried to, I want to try this lens. So what I did was I created three by three millimeter steel flaps at zero and one hundred degree. This is my technique of creating a steel flap. So what I do is I create the initial groove. And after that, I take my present and just like a small incision, caters or tunnel, I create a more uniform steel flap so that the thickness comes out well. Because sometimes if you do the other way around, then you can get an irregular steel flap. So just creating the flaps in both sides, making sure that I already marked the zero, one hundred degrees and slap it around three point three, three by three millimeters. Then I place in, and I enter the eye, one point five millimeters from the limbus on either side in the bed of the steel flap. Because that's going to be my output area. This is the lens. The CMT Flex lens is a lens which has a T-shaped haptic, it's cut out and come out of this there. So these are specially designed for us, Dr. Nivian.
Vibhav, you speak just a little louder, please, Vibhav.
Sorry. Is it better now?
Yeah.
Can you hear it better? Yeah. So after placing in the, I place the lens in the cartridge, any normal cartridge they normally give you. So it's a T, it has a T-shaped haptic, I'll be showing the image later on. So you create your two point eight millimeter or nail tunnel. And after you made the steel flaps on either side, I've already completed my bietrectomy. In bietrectomy per se, what I mean is not just anterior bietrectomy because you're going to be placing it in the sulcus area. So I did a proper posterior bietrectomy as well as vitreous shaving in the three and nine o'clock area so that I avoid any idling breaks later on. So after that, I bring in a twenty-three gauge forcep because the entry I made was a twenty-three gauge MVR blade. And this has a, this has a flat platform which catches the T end. So now I'm injecting the IOL. So after injecting in the IOL, you can see very clearly, this is the, yeah. So now I have held the T, either you can hold the head or the junction of the head and the tip, the T point. Hold it, but don't pull on it. That's the trick that Dr. Nivian tells us. So just keep holding it, but don't push on it because it can sometimes detach if you really pull it on. So just be there in the visual axis and inject the other part of the lens completely, just like any normal foldable lens. It's a hydrophilic foldable lens. It comes out very well. And the trailing haptic, the trailing T is now lodged inside the main pore. So it's kind of acting like a fulcrum there. Then the next step is you bring out the first T. So after bringing it out, you actually feel it, you feel a pop. And that, you can see here very well, then the T has come out underneath this little flap. And so one part of the procedure is done. The second part is you switch your hands and place the forceps in the, so the other side of the bed and the same forceps, the platform. And you already created a side pore. And you already created a side port here, so with a handshake maneuver, just slightly pushing the the distal end of the trailing haptic. This is your selected forceps, crisscross forceps, it gives you a good grip. So what you do is, after pushing it slightly inside, you hold the shoulder or the edge of the optic, it gives you a good grip. You pull on it slightly in the visual axis. And then you hold the lens again in the T pocket and simply just externalize it. So after you externalize the pocket, I'll just show you same way. So you just keep an eye on the other side because of the T, the T-shaped design, it doesn't get through, it doesn't come out. So both the sides are now, both sides with the T haptics are out. And after that, you can either suture the flap or you can place in glue for a quicker result and for sutureless result, and then take out the ports accordingly. So the patient, this is the, this is the shape of the CMT Flex self-fixed IOL. It's 14 millimeters in length. So it's advised that you measure the wide-to-wide initially and you keep it around up to 11 millimeters or so, because you're going 1.5 millimeters on either side. And the optic is six millimeters. So it's a larger optic to avoid any recentration. So this is, these are the OCT, anterior segment OCT pictures through the T haptics. So you can see them, they're nicely tucked in inside the flaps. And it's a very stable lens, so the patient is doing pretty well one month later with good vision. And so it's a, it's a good design. And thank you very much.
Great technique, Vipheesh. How often do you perform OCT, the coronary OCT for your cases when you have a scar of fixation in these surgeries like that?
Not always, but I think in such cases, when you're externalizing the haptics, somehow it feels better. At least I have an idea where your three-piece haptic is or your T-shaped haptic is. So you know, you can monitor the patient. In case you want to document an erosion happening, you can, you know, plan accordingly earlier.
Okay, and is there any tip from yourself not to leave the intraocular lens tilted? Do you have any, any tip or technique?
I think it's a very stable lens, the patient is doing pretty well. And the, as this is the basic rule in self fixation to avoid tilting is to mark properly. Because you need to mark on a dry surface so that your marker is very well seen. So you enter the exact spot, 180 degree across to avoid any, you know, ups and downs and to avoid any iris shafting. But it has a 10-degree angulation as well to prevent pupillary block and to prevent, you know, the UGH syndrome, the ubiitis glaucoma. That can sometimes happen in such situations if you go too close to the iris plane. So it's a, and it's a very economical lens. It costs you around $20 to the doctor to use. So the cost of surgery also comes down.
All right. Want to comment, Marcelo?
I love the technique. I like very much the lens that you're showing us. I think it's a very stable, it seems a very stable lens. But this type of lens need, obviously, obviously, this is scleral box, right? All the time to cover this, the optics, if you may say, of this lens. Any problems with that? Maybe any extrusion of the material?
I think steel flap is actually going to be a good choice for long-term avoiding exposure if your anterior surface is pretty okay. The other way that, I think Dr. Karvelal has devised a very similar IOL, which is used in a lot of European countries, and that was a very pretty good IOL. And in that case, he also advises, you can also do a steel tuck technique in which you can, you can enter vertically. And after that, what you can do, you can create a pocket on either side of the entry. And after creating the pocket, what you can do is you can just, after coming, excluding the T shape, you can just place in the two arms into the pockets.
Okay.
Either side.
Thank you, Marcelo.
Thank you again. And we have the honor to call for Pablo Cebides. Pablo, you are welcome to join, as I said, to the next, to this Retinosome, I mean, 12. It's your first appearance here. So I've heard about Pablo since many years ago, you know, in some congresses, some events over here, even in the events from Latam, Marcelo, that we participated all together. And I remember Pablo from other events in South America and elsewhere. So it's a great pleasure that we discovered you for Retinosome, Pablo. So you are part of the team. Thank you again. And I have here your video if you want me to display or if you want to display.
I will try to share my screen. May I?
Sure. Giderme, Pablo Cebides for co-host, okay? Okay, you are all set?
Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can, Dr. Pablo.
Okay. Good. Thanks, good song. Thanks for the invitation. It's a pleasure for me to participate in this meeting. And I would like to share you one case. I won't share you good results. I will share complications and mistake. And my case is a very simple one, but one that can help us address some questions about our everyday surgical practice. This is a 55-year-old female patient who was sent to me from a colleague with decreased visual acuity for five months, a vision of 2100 in the right eye and 2020 in the left eye. In the right eye, she had a macular hole of about 300 microns in a normal posterior pole, the left eye, as we can see in the OCT. And this is the video of the surgery with the OCT. I performed here a core vitrectomy, a posterior hyallic staining with trachein alone. In this case, I did a fluid air exchange before ILM staining, or better staining of the membrane. And I normally use the Flex Loop, the finesse loop. I think it's very helpful for me. And doing the ILM filling. The macroholt surgery didn't have any problem. And the final result, finishing the ILM filling, fluid air exchange, and the closure of the hole. This is a picture 40 days after the surgery. The patient had a visual acuity of 2080. And I sent back the patient to the surgeon, to the colleague who sent her to me. And the patient developed, I didn't see any touch of the lens during the surgery, but the patient developed a nuclear and posterior subcuticular cataract. And I sent back the patient to her original surgeon. And the person who did the biometry before the cataract surgery, performed an ultrasonography as well, and noted a posterior capsular break. As you can see in the picture and in the report. I didn't see the patient before the cataract surgery. The cataract surgery was performed, the fake of surgery, and the result was this. The patient had a lens, cortex lens, the vitreous. And she was sent back to me again, and I performed a new surgery to aspirate the lens, cortex, with no complications. And this was the final result with a visual acuity, final visual acuity for 2030. And I brought this case to you to raise some questions. First, when do you consider clear lens cataract surgery during macular surgery? Do you consider clear lens surgery in all patients with more than 50 to or 55 years old? Do you think it's necessary to do fluid air exchange before membrane, ILM staining? In this case, I use a regular stain. And I think it's very difficult to stain without fluid air exchange. With double stains, dyes is easier. Do you think the fluid air exchange be a risk factor for cataract or capsular break? And to address the importance of preoperative ultrasound before cataract surgery in vitrectomy eyes? Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Sure, congratulations, Pablo. Lovely surgeries. And we're answering one of those questions you are asking. If you could share your screen for a while, but I have the questions here. And first, you know, I love to do surgeries and keep the lens. If I see, as you were asking for macro surgery, should we always remove the lens? Not always. If we have good visualization systems, if we have, I like using the contacts. And even though if you got some cataracts before the surgeries, with, after vitrectomy, after the core and the peripheral vitrectomy, it is possible to see and have very good and accurate view from the macro surface, especially for those epiretinal membranes or macroholt surgeries if the lens is not, of course, too much affected with the cataract. But if it's possible to do it without removing in the first step, I don't usually perform cataract surgery together with the vitrectomy. And I have many, many examples, and I'm going to present you a case shortly with a small pupil, some cataract. And I actually have a video, it's called a pinhole surgery. You have a very tiny, small pupil. And even though you have this small surgery with a wide angle, you still can see and are able to watch the macular with a good macular lens and perform the actions without having to remove the cataract. And of course, if you, for those cases, I like doing a fluid exchange. But in some cases, especially for macroholt, I put the expensive, just a bit expensive gas and ask the patient, I emphasize the patient, that he has to perform to stay in the head-down positioning to avoid, you know, the cataract in the post-operative period. And this is my opinion, and if anybody else wants to give their opinions. And sorry, Pablo, if you want to share again the questions, you can leave them there so that people could give their opinions on what you asked. Antanasius, what are thoughts on that?
Dr. Nanasus, you're muted.
Okay, and Vipheesh.
I was thinking that we shouldn't do, I don't do cataract surgery when I have, when I can see very nicely the macular hole. I don't use touch lenses, you see it, because I'm using a wide-angle observation system, because I have now with 3D, a very clear view of the retina. I'm using the double dye in brilliant blue, which is very easy and you don't need as air to get into the eye. And I'm happening at the end of the exchange of fluid and gas exchange. If you, if you're just touching the posterior pole so much and if you inject more than that. And another thing that people don't remember is that people that they have a gas exchange, they shouldn't go over the mountain for the next thing to do.
Yeah. And the big mistake in this case, the cataract surgery should have been performed along with a vitrectomy surgeon, not the cataract surgeon alone with that capsular break.
Okay, well, let's stop.
Good discussions, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you, Pablo. Thank you. This is something, some points to consider. But in summary, if I see well, I don't do a cataract surgery. But if I cannot see much and that could make the macular peeling difficult, then I will go ahead and do combined. And so that could add a little bit more of time, especially if you want to do combined with a buckle, so a buckle, faco, vitrectomy, so things could add up on our time. But sometimes you need to do that, you know. Congratulations, great images and great cases. And I will now share my screen to show my video. It's, I called this a nightmare case. But I think I showed this video in a small meeting here for Brazil from the Federal University of São Paulo in Rio Branco Preto. But it was kind of a nightmare case, and it's very interesting to show you this case. I was amazed with the case, with the surprise, and also with the result. Just a second. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Can you see the screen now?
Yes.
So that's what I call the nightmare case. So I go ahead with my video. It was an outcome switch, because, you know, these diabetic retinopathy patients, they are so severe sometimes. And we work at the Eye Bank Foundation here, so we get oftentimes so chronic cases. The patient is faking, has some cataract, but you see this membrane, the pupil doesn't dilate much. You see the membrane inside, we use the wide-angle system, and now I'm staining this membrane. This epiretinal fibrous tissue was so difficult to deal with. And I'm injecting now the brilliant blue. You see this whole thing on the macro surface, very tough case. And from this time on, I was just wondering, should I continue the surgery? Should I just trim a bit this membrane? Should I have ordered this surgery in the first place? So because I was trying to peel, the membrane was so tough and adherent. And I had to be very slow, otherwise I could create this tear. And so I was very slow in the peeling, going downwards, upwards, sideways. And you see the whole structure moves. And I couldn't imagine this surgery, this way it's going on at the end, the result. That could actually be this outcome switch. So with appropriate forceps, I was peeling and very slowly, trying to find a cleavage plane in very slow, speed here is of utmost importance. As you see here, I'm using these forceps, take a look what happened, what a surprise for me. I almost fell down the chair after I saw this. I'm doing the peel, everything seems to be very cool. I did not cause any tear, so yeah, I found this cleavage plane. So I'm removing the membrane, and now I'm happy that I could find this cleavage plane. But now, you see what happens, I'm still studying the macula and trying to remove the membrane, but suddenly, out of a sudden, you know what happened? I, what happened, what is this? You know, part of the, actually, the tip of the forceps fell down on the macro surface. It was a very good forceps, I liked, I loved this forceps so much that I kept using this for longer than maybe I could have used that. And this thing was there inside on the macro surface, so what could I do? Now I have to stop the peeling and attempt to remove this intraocular foreign body that I created, but it's not a problem. And I held this like that, but I couldn't come out in this position. So the illumination pipe helped me to move the directions. So everything was pretty straight before I put it out of the eye through the sclera that I have already removed the trocar there. And so this, the part of the forceps was removed, and I'm using another forceps, of course, to remove it. So I'll put this on the corner, you see the patient has some cataract. The pupil does not dilate fully, but still, with the macular lens, we have such great images, as I was commenting and answering Pablo's questions. You see, still, you have some cataract, the pupil doesn't dilate much, but the images there were great, and it was possible to remove. And I'm trimming the epiretinal tissue like that, still, the macula doesn't look okay. So, but I have to go ahead, I could remove now the superior temporal and inferior epiretinal very adherent tissues, but now looks much better. I would leave this nasal tissue because it doesn't pay off to try to remove it, and it's not on the macular area. And the foreign body did not cause any perforation or any lesion. These vessels that you see bleeding there are from the new vessels. And the patient had this retinal detachment nasal superior. So I did this vitrectomy and the retinotomy at the very periphery to sort of very, you see now, after perforo-carbon liquid. So this is, looks so beautiful now, I see the macula, I see the epiretinal tissue there, laying down nasal there with no problem at all, and the macula looks much, much better now. And I'm doing the laser for the retinotomy, the nasoretinotomy that I created. And so the retina now is pretty flattened, looks pretty good, much better case. And of course, this laser is for holding the retina in place, also for point photo coagulation, as you see. And the macula looks pretty good, I'm doing here in direct perforo-carbon silicone oil exchange. And it was pretty good, the patient was faking, no disturbance in the lens. And I could go up to the end of the case without causing any further lesions or whatever like, that was cool, you know, but that was difficult, I will have to tell you because I was kind of scared when I saw this part of the forceps falling down on the macular area. But then I had the patience and concentration to remove it before going on with the epiretinal tissue peel. Thank you very much for your attention.
Nice case, Hudson, very, very interesting, very, very interesting. So would you, when you finish these procedures, at the end, which type of tamponade did you usually use, silicone oil or sometimes you use a gas bubble?
It depends, in this case, we have, we had so much traction. So we had traction and nasoretinal detachment. You see, the membrane that was previously on the macula was kind of pulling everything symmetrically towards the fovea. So I had to do retinotomy at the very periphery nasal side because it was shortened. So I wouldn't leave the eye with gas unless I had to be very economic and doing just a little retinotomy. But because the patient had so much track and adhesives all over, so I think for the best outcome for this patient was silicone oil. And with a very slow exchange, the macula was, you know, ended up so good. I would tell you, I wouldn't think this thing would be stained like that because I saw the membrane, it was not likely that the membrane would be peeled off or then the macula would look so good, and no macular hole, nothing was created. So silicone oil was the best, best gas for me.
Dr. Tanazios, very, very well managed case. Actually, you also did a foreign body removal along with vitrectomy in a diabetic vitrectomy case, so it was, it was the father of all cases. And I think it was like a napkin ring, the contraction all around at the arcade. And I think one, one take home message for all of us is when you're reusing, especially forceps, I think we should check them outside the eye once, you know, open them a few times. Sometimes you might find some traces of becoming loose and, you know, giving way. That doesn't happen inside the eye, that's what I've also sometimes faced. You know, problems by reusing instruments, but unfortunately, we have to do that because of the costing issues. Very well managed case, excellent.
Thank you.
Well, it's a nightmare also for us that we're going to sleep now. I'm going to see that dropping inside. Can I ask you something? Are you fond of by manual surgery for these cases? Or you prefer to do it the way you did it?
I, you know, I like not doing by manual because for me, what is most important is to see, to have a very good and accurate view. I could have done it by manual, but I don't think in some cases, some, you know, oftentimes I like to trim these membranes with the cutter because we have such much better cutters today. And if I need, then I would use by manual. But this case, I could get away with that without being by manual because, you know, I could be by manual with a light pipe. In this case, that helped me. And with a good instrument, good forceps, I could separate and cleavage plane and remove the epiretinal tissue. So for me, this was not a problem. And of course, some cases I would consider doing by manual. But then if I, if I have this experience, I don't think that is very necessary unless I find it very difficult to remove. But this membrane, Atanasios, this was so tough. You see, I was pulling on the membrane, it was so attached that even by manual, that could probably be removed like the known by manual technique as it happened. But I think for me, you have to feel, you have to be very sensitive on the tissue. When you grab the tissue with the forceps, I feel the tissue all over the forceps. So I feel the pressure, I think the hands are the main instruments that they control the, what force you use for removing the membrane. And the strength you use, they are, they help you decide whether you should pull more or less. And in this case, if you feel how much of a strength you use, and then you don't need to worry about being by manual or not. I think it's how you feel the tissue. And plus, as I was answering Pablo's questions on how to or when to do cataract surgery, but in this case, if I see, if I have a good visualization system, I saw accurate, as you see, even though the pupil did not dilate, but I could see so perfect the macula in very sharp view. So for me, this was the main issue, besides the, my manual technique that for me would be in the third place.
That's what I call experience.
Thank you, thank you very much. And I would like to know if anybody else has any more comments on these surgeries? You know, I will ask Muzar, Muzar, are you around? I see your name here, Muzar is a very friend of mine, and he's probably listening, but seeing some patients there, are you there, Muzar? Do you wanna comment? I'm, we had an issue with Dr. George Dimitri, who could not join us because of a health problem. He just came out of the hospital, but he's okay. Not a serious problem, but he could not join us because of these health issues. And because we are a little ahead of the program, we have Dr. Alexandre Ventura, but Dr. Alexandre Ventura scheduled his patients for later, for 2:00 PM, this Brazilian and Argentina time. And so he's not in yet. And so I will come later together, if you guys could join us, 2:00 PM Brazilian time or Argentina time, just to see Alex Ventura's presentation. We are gonna be in to follow the schedule. If not, this is gonna be recorded as well at this time. But I wanna ask Dr. Marcelo, Marcelo Murilo, my friend and my neighbor, to close the, this session of Retinosome. And as Marcelo said that we should, and Vibe Hab agreed that we should do, you know, these Retinosome sessions in Bolivia, very close to us, and in India as well, I was invited by Vibe Hab and Aaron to your city there is Delhi. And also for Natarajan in the other part of India, that would be great, you know? And we should think about it. So Marcelo, if you could make these comments and closing comments for this session?
Thank you, Hudson. 2022 maybe would be the first Retinosome reunion in person, so we can exchange all this experience that we all are learning and we all need to, to share with our colleagues. So maybe 2022 would be reunited in person. I think it's, it's necessary. Would be like two years, Hudson, two, three years with Retinosome? Two years, I mean.
Yeah, almost two years, actually, almost two years, yeah. And we are so glad that even though, you know, these meetings are held, were held so far in the pandemics, we are now starting to participate. And I also wanna mention that actually, we are completing the next Retinosome Paris, not the 15th event, but the 16th because we also participated with Atanasios in the Tesalonicke Vitroretinal Summer School. So we were invited there, I was invited. And in the name of Retinosome, I wanna thank again Atanasios for giving me and us from Retinosome the opportunity to participate into your course. Because as you say, we do that not for us, we do that for, you know, the residents, the fellows that are learning, for our good discussions and our learning from different techniques from all over the world. So I wanna thank again you, Atanasios, for allowing us to participate in your Vitroretinal Summer School. And after Marcelo's words now, nice words, if you wanna close this ceremony, we are gonna get back around 2:00 PM here to listen to Dr. Alex Ventura and Rodrigo shorts.
I think, I think that you kept the most important thing that you did and with all of your friends that I get to know them like talking heads. I don't know what's beneath them, but it's talking heads now. The thing that you kept the fire, you kept the light on for those years that actually we cannot do anything else but this. And this pandemic is not away yet, it's still in Europe. It's still fighting for people that are not vaccinated. And the hospitals are really full of people this winter. But I think that I can invite you, all of you, especially, you can arrange that, if you can make the trip to Greece. Because we decided to do the Tesalonicke Vitroretinal Summer School at the last week of August, beginning of, sorry, beginning of September, which is the best time to come to Greece, weather wise. And if you think that you can have it in your calendar, that you can spend a few days with us in Greece, we would love to have you. So Hudson, Retinosome is going to be there if you like or not. You're going to be there by, as talking heads, but I would prefer to see the bodies of you in light. And congratulations for keeping the pipe, keeping the light on.
Thank you, Atanasios. And I will, we will go to Tesalonicke. And we should program that Vibe Hab, what do you think about it? We should program.
Perfect.
Last week of August, think about it.
The Greek Retinosome.
So thank you again, and Retinosome is not over yet, but we are gonna give this interval, we're gonna get back around 2 o'clock for two more talks, you know? Retinosome 12 is a different program. It's supposed to be a little longer because of Tomo Cordoba, it's happening all day. So during this dinner time or lunchtime for us here, I would like, I would suggest you to visit of tomocordoba.ar and watch all the lectures interact. And we're gonna give a little break here, and we have still talks from Rodrigo Pegado from Rio de Janeiro, Brazil, and Alex Ventura. Because yeah, actually, Rodrigo is just arriving, we could finish by now with him. Let's see if he shows up here. Rodrigo, are you in? Rodrigo is from Litora, Rio de Janeiro, we visited his service years ago. And Rodrigo, Rodrigo is not only Brazilian, he has another nationality in Europe. He's from Luxembourg. I know Luxembourg is not a very large country, but they do lots of good things there and especially research and all their stuff. And then I will communicate with Alex Ventura that he's gonna have his presentation here shown and recorded so we could watch it later, not a problem. So I invite Rodrigo, Rodrigo Pegado, Rodrigo shorts Pegado, did you?
Hello, hello, it's.
Good to see you, man.
Hello, friend.
So you will have the honor. I, I'm telling here the folks, our friends, that you are a Brazilian, but you are also from Luxembourg. How is that?
Luxembourg, yeah, yes. My, my other nationality is Luxembourg.
Yes, and how is that? And you have the double nationality and how did you get it?
My grandmother, my grandmother born in Luxembourg.
Oh, really? Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That is great. So Rodrigo, I will ask Guilherme to put you as your co-host so you close this session. And we are going to have this lunchtime and then we are going to get back later, PM 2, for Alexandre Ventura, his presentation. Actually, his presentation would be, it's going to be like a keynote one because he's going to be alone in the good presentation with more time. So that would be great, that would be really great. Guilherme, please, could you put Rodrigo Schwartz-Pegado as the co-host now? So Rodrigo, you are welcome again to Red Nauseum. And now if you want to share your screen and show your case, we are here for you.
Okay, thank you. Hudson, it's possible to see?
Yeah, we are seeing everything.
Okay, thank you. Hello, everyone. I present a case of patients with a cycle cell enemy and a systemic arterial irritation. Ultrasound examination showed vitreous hemorrhage without signs in retinal detachment in one eye. The other eye is normal. In similar case, patients with a cycle cell enemy are susceptible to, to the formation of neovascularization, called sifan with vitreous hemorrhage that leads to blindness. In the peripheral retina, it has associated vitreous factor and vascular change. The patient has associated epithelatinal membrane about my vitrectomy. The patient was dilated, detracting performance. This is a difficult vitrectomy. In these cases, we need to see the retinal peripheral very well. Then first perform vitrectomy on the hemorrhage vitreous in the peripheral. Retina was not peripheral holes. After removing the vitreous, remove the hyalloglass membrane in vitreous hemorrhage. The epidermal retinal membrane and peripheral vitreous factor were visualization and removed. I did this clary indentation and the laser plus after. This case, I...
What, what machine you're using, Rodrigo?
And then?
You're using Constellation?
The retinal membranes attach. I use the...
You are now peeling off the membrane, but, oh yeah, I see it, it's coming now.
I push the epidermal membrane.
So did you stain with brilliant blue, Rodrigo?
Yeah.
Good staining, it's possible to see. Then laser? You do some laser and you leave the eye with gas or not at all? Well, it's a PRP.
Finish with air. That's one. Thanks. I hope that in the near future, we will meet in person at Red Nauseum in Buzios, Rio de Janeiro.
Oh, yeah. Oh, please, Rodrigo, Rodrigo is inviting us for Red Nauseum in Buzios. Buzios is such a great resort city, very famous. So, oh, thank you for the invitation, but we are going to organize it very soon because we are going to have presentation, you're going to be there, you know.
Years ago, it's a beautiful place, very nice.
Nice resort location.
I want, I want to go again. I want to visit again.
I invite you returning here.
Thank you.
Good.
I have one question about your presentation. What type of anesthesia did you use in this case?
Sorry.
What anesthesia, Rodrigo, anesthesia?
What anesthesia did you use?
Local, local anesthesia.
Yeah, not sub tenon, is peribulbar?
Not sub tenon.
Or sub tenon? And you don't have any concerns about the peribulbar or anesthesia in patient with sickle cell disease?
I don't know.
No?
Thank you, Rodrigo.
And, and, and preoperative Avacine? Preoperative, yes.
Preoperative?
Avacine.
Avacine, no, no use. But, but it's better, obviously, but in this case, no, no use.
Okay.
Thank you, Rodrigo. Rodrigo, before we close, we close now, we are closing. I want to show you and invite you.
My review. In my review, we, we, we need to use Avacine three or five days before.
Three to five days before?
Yeah.
Okay.
In my review.
So...
Thank you very much.
I will finish our presentations now, showing you the teaser for Red Nauseum Paris. You know, next week, we are going to be in France, you are all invited. So thank you very much again, again. And obrigado a todos. Una buena sesión de Oftamo Cordoba, a great session from Oftamo Cordoba. It was great to be here. Thank you very much, everybody. And obrigado, Rodrigo, obrigado, Pablo, Marcelo, and todos que estão acá. Thank you for all. You know, the official languages from Oftamo Cordoba are English and Spanish, but not everybody speaks Spanish. So we mix them up a little bit and thank you very much. Obrigado a todos, hasta la vista.
Gracias, hasta la vista. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Bye, Pablo, Hudson, Rodrigo. Bye bye.
Bye bye. Nice to see you.
See you.